Good evening and welcome to our January Town Council meeting. We are going to be moving into our meeting agenda, but before we move into public comments, we have a very special guest here tonight. We have our Rutherford County Mayor Joe Carr, and he's going to talk a little bit about our proposed Rutherford County Forensic Center. Dave kind of gave us a sheet on it at our workshop so that we could be prepared. So Mayor Carr, welcome to the town of Smyrna and to our meeting. We are glad to have you here.
So, thank you very, very much. And so I was talking to Councilwoman Peebles before we started, and I said, when was the last time the Rutherford County Mayor had the privilege of coming and speaking before the Smyrna Town Council? And she explained to me, not since she had been a councilwoman. So I hope, I hope this isn't a first, but if it is, this will be the first of many. Let me just say to the rest of the Town Council, I'm going to take every opportunity to embarrass the mayor, because we have, for my part and Rutherford County, we have a truly very good working relationship. And to me, in part, and I'll be brief, in part is illustrated by the fact that we received this invitation, and I really appreciate it. And it illustrates the cohesiveness between the town of Smyrna and the county, because quite honestly, and we talk about this all the time, Mayor, what's good for Smyrna should be good for Rutherford County. What's good for the county should be good for Smyrna. And we endeavor to do that. And to the extent we have our differences, we work on those differences, and then we move forward. So this may be an example of where we want to bring some value to Smyrna specifically. And so I appreciate you allowing me to make this brief presentation. This is, and please, council members, if you have a question, I work really well conversationally, so please just interrupt. That is more than okay. So what we're talking about is the need for a Rutherford County Regional Forensic Center. What is a forensic center? A forensic center just essentially is a place where we're required, the county is required by statute, to perform autopsies. Currently, Rutherford County performs about 320 to 330 autopsies a year. We're required by statute to do that, in particular, when there is a questionable death or there is a death investigation being led by law enforcement. That is that statutory requirement. Eric, if you, I've got Eric controlling the clicker, because I don't multitask. Mary Esther will tell you, Mayor Reed will tell you, the mayor of Rutherford County doesn't multitask. So anyway, what you're looking at here is a map of Tennessee, and you're seeing the shaded area in Middle Tennessee in red. That area is serviced by Forensic Medical Center in Nashville. So clearly, 65 counties currently are being serviced out of the medical center in Nashville. Shelby County is serviced in Memphis. Then you have Hamilton County is serviced in Chattanooga. Then you have the orange area, which is those counties that look about, what, about a dozen, maybe 15 counties serviced out of Knoxville? And you have another half a dozen counties serviced out of Johnson City. So clearly, two-thirds of all the counties in Tennessee right now are being serviced out of Nashville, the Nashville Forensic Center. Next slide, please, Eric. And so, can you back up? There you go. So what you have here is you have a graph of the number of deaths per year and, of course, the number of autopsies per year. And I want to stop for just a second, and Mayor Reed and I were talking about this yesterday, but the fact of the matter is, is Rutherford County is now the fourth-largest county in the state of Tennessee, surpassing Hamilton County. As of January 2025, Rutherford County, according to the UT Center for Population Studies, the Boyd Center, Rutherford County has an estimated 388,909 people, almost 400,000 people, and that is growing. And it grows every year by leaps and bounds. As a matter of fact, you know all this already, but Rutherford County is, is and has been the fastest-growing county in the state of Tennessee, and is the 42nd fastest-growing county in the nation. And so with this population growth comes our statutory requirement to deal with the necessary autopsies with questionable homicidal deaths. Eric, next slide, please. So what are, what we're proposing, and we have been looking, back up one. We need to back up some more, Eric. There we go. So, ladies and gentlemen, this is my Chief of Staff, who most of you are familiar with. Everybody loves Eric, but see what Eric does is, see, he tries to figure out how he can sabotage the mayor. You're doing a splendid job.
It's Todd Sperman's fault.
Anyway, what I, I, well, let me tell, I'm going to bail him out. He is, he is splendid for the mayor. So the mayor wouldn't get anything done without it.
Todd's the one.
Thank you, Eric. So what we're trying to do is, we're trying to locate a 15,000-square-foot facility off a weekly lane. As the council knows, Rutherford County has about 17 acres up there, where we currently have a clerk and a convenience center. We have about 10 other acres that are left available to us. Our plans for that 10 acres is to locate this 15,000-square-foot facility there. In addition, in the coming months, we are going to look toward the County Commission for approval of an additional EMS station. So we're, what we're trying to make out of that 17 acres is a campus that will suit and fulfill the needs of this end of the county. And that forensic center is going to anchor that part of it. Next slide, please. There, well, that's not, that, this is the, this is what the forensic center is going to look like currently. Klein, Sweeney Associates out of Nashville is the architect and the engineer. The county has contracted with them for almost $1 million to do the design and engineering work. We're within about 45 days of the completion of that, where we will have a hard bid number. And this facility will cost on or about $15 million to construct, not including the engineering. This facility currently, while we're pursuing state grant money, currently, this facility will be funded with county funds without the need to borrow money or raise taxes. Next slide. This is the floor plan of the facility. And this is, and again, we're about, I would say about 80% complete. The general floor plan is going to look like this, but there may be some minor tweaks to the floor plan. So the question is, is why am I before the council of the city of Smyrna? Two reasons. Number one, this is in your backyard, and I think it's incumbent on a working relationship that I come to you and say, hey, we would like your blessing. That's number one. Number two, I'm not coming and asking for any financial resources. Having said that, if you are so disposed, we would gladly accept. But number, but number three, but number three, and finally, this is a collaborative effort of all the cities of Rutherford County, Murfreesboro, Smyrna, Laverne, Egleville, and the county, because this is going to be a county project whereby all the citizens of the county, including the city residents, most especially the city residents, will benefit. And that's a brief summary, but I covet your support. As Murfreesboro has given it to us, we covet your support as well as Laverne and Egleville. I'll be glad to take your questions.
So, I mean, I think from your presentation, we can see that we're definitely in need, especially with, would you say, 65 counties?
Yes, ma'am.
That we're kind of sharing with. But one of the things that was asked, Dave had put on our agenda for the workshop, kind of a brief, little summary of the project. How do we make sure that Rutherford County, if we allow other counties to come in, doesn't get, has to be behind other counties in regards to autopsy?
Because the whole purpose of this is to service Rutherford County first. The idea is, in some respects, and quite honestly, the financial component to this is a great question, because currently, Rutherford County budget's about 1.2 to 1.3 million annually for forensic services. We anticipate that number reducing by a half a million dollars a year reoccurring, so we're actually going to save county residents a half a million dollars a year. That is before we allow or permit other counties to come to Rutherford County for their autopsy work. So even after that is done, that's going to add additional payback value to the county residents. I don't believe we should be in the business of being a profit model, but anytime we can alleviate a part of the burden, financial burden to the property taxpayers, we're going to do it. And that's, this is actually going to do that. But Rutherford County residents are the priority, number one, always will be.
How many new county employees will be added?
I would, that's a question, let me, I was remiss. Let me introduce Denise Martin. She is our supervisor for Rutherford County Medical Examiners. And then, of course, everybody knows Eric Kennison, my Chief of Staff. So why don't you speak to that real quick, Denise, about the additional staffing for just Rutherford County, and then the additional staffing it may be if other counties come on board, if you don't, is that, if that, is that okay?
Great, perfect.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. So what we would do is combine our medical examiner's office that we currently have, and we're required to have at a county level. They would be moving into the Regional Forensic Center. Obviously, we would need to bring in some experts. We would bring in initially one forensic pathologist to service Rutherford County and have some contract arrangements with other local physicians, so that we could allow that forensic pathologist to take a vacation, obviously. A couple of forensic techs to assist that forensic pathologist, and then we would need to increase our investigative staff, so that we could take it out of EMS. So initially, we would be looking at about 10 or 11 foundation employees. If we were to take on other counties and provide their service, then obviously, we would have to increase the forensic pathologist and the forensic tech needs at that point. So ultimately, we would grow our team from there. And if I could just address the question of why, how we would maintain keeping Rutherford County a priority, just like the other regional forensic centers, the facility is also their county medical examiner's office. So in Davison County, Nashville, Davison County is their priority, and obviously, they're a very large county, so not only are we competing with a metro county, which has a high volume in itself, but also those 63 other counties. But Rutherford County would retain that priority for Rutherford County, being that the fact that we are the county medical examiner's office first, so the priority would always remain with our county.
Great.
How many of those existing counties that are being served by Davison County, do you anticipate coming over? Is there any, any kind of schedule if this comes to fruition?
Fantastic question, Councilman Dempsey. So in April of 2024, the State Department of Health released a study, and on page 27 of that study, I'm going to read, it says, "Despite its proximity to Nashville," referring to the forensic center in Nashville, "the establishment of a sixth regional forensic center in Rutherford County would have the most significant impact statewide. This center could be strategically placed within the state's fifth-most populous county." We are now the fourth-most populous county. "Protected to ascend to a fourth-largest county by 2029," and I think they were off by four years. "Ideally, this new regional forensic center could provide autopsy services to counties to its north, south, and east that are presently served by Middle Tennessee Regional Forensic Center, leaving Middle Tennessee to handle autopsy services for all counties that lie west between Nashville and Memphis." Essentially, they gave a list, I gave a list of about 15 to 20 counties that would be options for service. On page 29 of that same state study, it says, "The assessment team that provided this study in April of 2024 wants to emphasize the urgent need to tackle staffing shortages, improve infrastructure, and prepare for population growth to ensure efficient death investigations and certification processes statewide. The assessment team strongly believes that Tennessee urgently requires at least one additional regional forensic center to alleviate the strain faced by the Middle Tennessee RFC, the Regional Forensic Center." Ideally, this facility would be located in Rutherford County. So we would have the assistance of the state, Councilman Dempsey, to reach out to those counties to our east, our south, and to the north that are adjacent to us. It'd be about 15 to 20 counties.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor had a question.
Please.
I heard you mention that this would not require a tax increase.
Yes, sir.
Obviously, people in Smyrna also pay county tax, right?
Yes, they do. For which we are eternally grateful.
They'd be interested to know that, right? Secondly, I guess my question is, is there any research or questions about any grant funds being available for?
Thank you. Yes, we have pursued federal grant funds, and we pursued state grant funds, and we are continuing to do that. However, unfortunately, this has become a political issue in Nashville. It's quite unfortunate, and to the extent that it has, to that same extent, it's not going to deter the county, because here's the challenge we have. Right now, Rutherford County has no Plan B, none. Let me give you an example. When we showed you the statewide slide a few minutes ago, where Shelby County was servicing Shelby County, about a year ago, Shelby County was servicing nine counties and Shelby County. They lost a forensic pathologist. They had a forensic pathologist move. And so they had all those nine counties in West Tennessee, and that forensic pathologist left. So the accrediting agency required them to reduce the number of autopsies. As such, all of those people came to, are coming to Nashville. If Nashville should be in the precarious position, for whatever reason, maybe a natural disaster, maybe they lose a pathologist, whatever, the first county they're going to go to, to reduce their workload, is going to be Rutherford. My question to everybody is, what do we do? We have, Denise and I have racked our brains on this question. We don't have a Plan B. We can't go to Knoxville. They're maxed out. We can't go to Hamilton County. We can't go to Johnson City. It's too far. Shelby County is already at maximum. What are we going to do? I don't have an answer. So my responsibility as mayor is to make sure, as a responsible mayor, to make sure that we have redundant systems in place in the event that something happens tragically that requires us to go to Plan B. We don't have Plan B. So what I'm advocating is Plan A. And Plan A is this regional forensic center located on Weekly Lane.
It is a statutory, statutory requirement.
We have, we have, we are required to perform autopsies, just like this county is required to educate our children, we're required to have a jail, we're required to provide solid waste services. There are certain things we're statutorily required to do, and by the way, we don't get any state funding for, or very, very little, but that doesn't remove our requirement. And quite honestly, Vice Mayor Atkins, it also, there's a right and a wrong here. We're, there's a rightness to this, and I think this is the right thing to do.
Thank you.
I've got a couple of questions. I think they're easy, but they're more just for informational purposes. So do you have a timeline that you're driving towards?
Yes, sir. I'm going to, it's our anticipation, we are going to go to the commission, the committee process beginning in February through the committee, and we hope for a positive resolution in March.
Perfect.
We, we would like to begin construction on or about May of this year.
What's construction look like, a year?
18 months.
18 months, okay.
And the biggest, the biggest issue on construction is get, is the lab equipment. The lead time on getting the lab equipment is not insignificant.
Okay. You mentioned in one of your slides, basically, we should be doing like 360-ish, maybe 380, depending on our population, and based on, I think, the description that we've kind of given, essentially, that's basically going to be the, the target capacity of the facility, I'm assuming, is taking care of Rutherford County, right?
No, sir, that would be incorrect. So generally, according to name, which is the accrediting agency, you're, you're looking at doing about 0.85 to 1 autopsies per thousand people. So right now, we're doing about 320 to 330. Obviously, that's going to trend up, so that creates an additional capacity of about 650 to 680 autopsies. It's that capacity that we will make available to the rest of the counties in Middle Tennessee.
I got you, okay.
Does that make sense?
Yep, it does. That's what I was getting at, was how much capacity are we going to be at versus what's available?
Yeah, Rutherford County would be about a third, and the rest of the state will be about two-thirds.
And then lastly, can you talk a little bit about how does the backlog or the lack of timing it takes to get back, how is that affecting us specifically? Closing cases, resolving case, what is, how does that affect the county specifically?
It, it can be a mess, and I'm going to let Ms. Martin speak to that, because she gets to live with that on a regular basis. Denise? Be gentle.
Her accent's better than yours.
Well, thank you. Well, certainly for law enforcement, for closing out their cases, communication is key. We are finding it, you know, that we are competing with those other counties to be able to have a voice be heard at the National Forensic Center. Obviously, there's only so much time in the day that they have the ability to, to, you know, pass on information and things like that. So from a law enforcement aspect, there is a communication breakdown. So obviously, with us, you know, having a facility that's priority, we anticipate that communication being a lot more intimate, being able to have discourse with the, with the forensic pathologists and our investigators on a day-to-day basis. Having the examinations being performed in county, it will prevent our detectives having to go to Nashville. Scheduling is always an issue, because they're, you know, they can be doing 20 autopsies during their, during the day, so they're never quite sure when our case is going to be seen. So our law enforcement investigators are, you know, often losing a whole day up in Nashville. So it is a staffing issue, and it's an overtime issue that our law enforcement are tasked with, but also getting that information back quickly, so they can either close their case or keep it open and then have a direction as to where they need to go. So getting those results back quickly is obviously imperative for those criminal investigations. For our families also, making sure that information gets to them on a timely basis, but they, you know, especially if people have other children or other concerns for hereditary diseases, things like that, getting estate claims done, getting insurance claims processed. So we anticipate, obviously, we've been able to concentrate on Rutherford County, that we'll be able to get that information out there a lot quicker and have that access both by families and law enforcement, directly with, with our staff. At the moment now, we have a big disconnect. Our data system that is a proprietary data system that the forensic medical require us to use, we are shut out from a lot of that information, so that we're not at liberty to discuss, either with law enforcement or our families, pertinent information that they need to know on a timely basis. Obviously, having our own data system, having our own facility and our own staff, we can certainly, you know, bridge that gap, which is certainly needed.
So when you say quicker, because you were talking about dealing with families and whatnot, and actually, that's my background as far as, I'm an attorney, and so I do a lot of the probate. So when you're talking about quicker, are you saying more like weeks instead of months now? Is that more, because I know you can't give like a specific?
Sure. Industry standards say that, you know, over 70% of the cases have to be done within 60 days, 90% have to be done within 90 days, you know, but that's an average. So a lot of these cases, some of them are taking five, six months to close out. Some of the information getting there to law enforcement is taking way too long. Some of this information starts funneling back quicker and should be passed on to the investigators, so that they can move forward with their cases, and it's not happening. Obviously, we don't want to close them too quick, so we have to wait for toxology results to come back, things like that. But our anticipation is, is yes, we can take weeks off those results being reported, but on a daily basis, we can relay that information as it's coming in, because we will have control of that information to law enforcement investigators, so that they can move forward. That is not happening currently. So we do anticipate death certificates will be completed quicker, so that obviously, that's a huge benefit for the families, but also that these reports and preliminary reports can be issued, so that law enforcement can take them forward to the DAs and have the cases move forward.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Other questions?
Mayor, is this a 24/7 operation, or is it just during the day?
Oh, it's 20, it's 24/7 operation. It's, it's an as-needed kind of situation. And obviously, there are some death investigations that are more sensitive than others. Example, an infant death, you have, that the requirement for an autopsy to determine the cause of death, the timing is much more critical than for, like an adult male example. So it just depends on the situation, but it would be as-need basis. Wouldn't be, it wouldn't necessarily operate 24/7, but it'd be available 24/7, if that makes sense.
May I have one additional?
Please.
I just needed to circle back around and make sure I was clear.
Yes, ma'am.
On the funding situation.
Yes, ma'am.
I know you said that you're seeking grants.
Yes, ma'am.
Through federal and state, but there's been some issues.
Yes, ma'am.
So does that mean that the majority of the funds are coming from the county budget now, or it's something you're budgeting for this year, next year?
So the, the funding for the construction of the facility currently is coming from the county. The county will neither borrow the money, nor will the county raise taxes to fund the construction for this project. The, the ongoing operation of the facility lends itself to a number of federal grants that we can't apply for until we become operational, but they are definitely available, and we will be pursuing those.
Okay.
Does that, did that answer your question?
Yes, yes.
Other questions or comments?
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
We appreciate you being here. For me personally, I think that this is something that we absolutely can, I can see the need for. I also have a husband that's at the house that is over detectives, and so I hear about, I hear about the situations when they're needing reports back quickly to determine cause of death. And so there have been instances where that information's not been gotten back in a timely manner.
The county is in a precarious position. We do not have a Plan B. That is not sound management, and I'm trying to alleviate the problem, and your help and assistance would be appreciated.
Are you all, we're not going to take a vote, per se, but are you all in favor of, see the reason for being supportive of this facility? Okay.
Thank you very much. I, I, a personal note, thank you for inviting me. This is the first time I've got a chance to do this. I actually enjoyed it, Mayor Reed.
Great, well, did you think, did you think you wouldn't?
Well, and I, see, well, I know that you and I play pranks on each other, and I didn't know if there was going to be a prank in here, so.
No, no.
The light is young. You haven't left yet.
That is a true statement. It's a pleasure.
I do appreciate your continued support. There's not been a time that I've called you to ask for help, that you all have not been willing to step up.
Thank you.
And I will tell you, all of the mayors in the county, we enjoy spending time together, but we all lean on each other.
We do.
To get things done, so.
What's good for Smyrna is good for the county.
Absolutely.
Amen. Thank you very much. God bless.
Okay. We will now move into our public comment, and the town's public comment period shall be reserved for those citizens that have signed up to address the Town Council at least 24 hours in advance of the meeting pursuant to our town's public comment period and is outlined above on our agenda. We have quite a few tonight that are going to speak for public comment. I would ask that when you come before us, that you just state your name, your address, and if you live in the town limits of Smyrna. And Ms. Amber over there is, she is on that time, so you'll have three minutes to speak. And Ken Hill, you know how she cuts people off. You know, she's like that, so try to stay within your three minutes. And our first speaker is Tyler Smith. So Tyler?
Hi, yes, my name is Tyler Smith. I live at 102 Foxland Drive in Smyrna, Tennessee.
And are you in the town limits?
Yes.
Thank you.
Sorry about that.
No, you're good.
What I have to say might not be as important as a forensic center, but it's important to me, so that's why I'm here. One thing that really concerned, not concerns, but that bring, that draws my attention is the traffic, the speeding, the growth. I've lived in my current home for a year and a half. I grew up in Old Hickory, Tennessee, Middle Tennessee, in my entire life. Smyrna has been key to my life. My father worked at Nissan for 34 years, come to the air show for my birthday every year, love it down here, so me and my family moved. With that said, Foxland Drive dead ends into Stewart's Creek Schools, so we have a lot of children walking to and from. of children walking to and from. As well, there's a playground at the end of the street at the Church of Christ that children sometimes go to as well. So for me, I, I want to request and get, you know, support on having a children at play sign on the street. I know that we have to follow certain guidelines for that. However, I, I would say that it qualifies. Tom Rose has responded to me and said that, you know, he would look into the qualifications. I've never personally met Tom Rose, so if he's in the room, sorry, but nevertheless. The second one, I would say the corner of Foxland Drive and Poplar Woods Drive is a busy intersection. It's getting busier, especially with the Pepsi Distribution Center moving in on Alma Ville Road. The Pepsi drivers have figured out that is a quick and easy way to get over to Nolansville. That road is small, and I would say it's not well-suited for semi-truck traffic. Matter of fact, last week I had to call the, the police department, who then referred me to the county, because one of those trucks had ripped down a communication line and a power line at the corner of Seminary Road and Rocky Fork out there. So that's just one of the issues we're running into as well. On that matter, I would like to see a stronger police presence in the area. We have the new gas station going in, we have a lot of traffic going to be coming from that, light, light pollution potentially. My home, I will be able to see those lights from my bedroom, not looking forward to that. However, with that being said, if we could get a, a stronger police presence or support for one, that'd be much appreciated. I know Steve, sorry, Councilman Sullivan has reached out to the Chief of Police, and they said that there would be one officer, you know, designated for the area, which is much appreciated. Obviously, I'd like to see more, but I appreciate the efforts. With that said, Seminary Road is extremely busy. I've been passed, it's a double yellow, two-lane road, and someone has passed me on that road.
Three minutes, Mayor.
All right. I appreciate y'all's time. Thank you so much.
Tom, I'm going to start with you, if you don't mind coming up to answer a few questions. And Tom, just so you know, this is Tyler. Tyler, this is Tom.
I was hiding back in the corner.
So, Tom, two things. Tyler, we had gotten your questions as well. The traffic strip there at Foxland slash Poplar Wood and the children at play, can you talk a little bit about those two items?
Yeah, so I know that sometimes people have a tendency to cut the corner when they're making a left turn, and so what we can do, and what I emailed Tyler about, is we can come in and put some skip striping, some yellow skip striping there to kind of let people know where to stay in their lane so they make that turn, they don't cut it too short and cut in front of a car that's waiting to turn a left onto Foxland. So that is something that I did send to the Public Works Superintendent. We're going to, once our stripe contractor gets enough striping, he's going to come in and handle projects like that, so he'll do, he'll put that striping in. As far as the children at play sign, what they're really moving toward, what most municipalities do, is right around a playground area, they'll put a playground symbol, because they're getting, getting away from words and going to more symbols, because the words, not everybody speaks English, can read English very well, so really what they want to do is focus more on the symbols. So what we will probably do is be able to put like a, a playground symbol in that area where children would be more likely to congregate. We want to get away from the children at play type signs, and most municipalities have gone away from that, because they're a type of sign that as motorists see over and over again, but they don't see children out there, it just becomes background noise and they don't really see it anymore, and their driving habits just go back to what they were in the past. So unfortunately, sometimes signs like that can actually give people a false sense of security, because they see a sign that says children at play, so they assume that the driver sees that as well, and they assume that the driver's going to be looking out for them, when in fact they're not. So, but we can certainly put up the playground sign close to the church to let people know that there would be children in that area.
Okay. That's kind of the first time I've heard that trucks are taking Poplar Wood. Is that what you meant, they're on Poplar Wood?
Yes, ma'am, from the Pepsi facility.
Are they talking about delivery trucks or drivers, or just semi?
The-
Pedestrian?
The semi trucks. The, you know, they have Mountain Dew or Pepsi on the side of, from that new Pepsi Distribution Center that's located off Alma Ville in twenty-
So maybe we can have some discussion, some internal discussion about that.
Maybe GPS or something's routing them that way, kind of like the problem we had on Florence, where it was routing them in the wrong direction.
They don't need to be on that road, for sure.
Well, they stopped everything on Florence the same way. It took us a little while to do it.
Well, we've tried.
We've tried.
We've tried, so, yeah.
We're getting tickets, let's just say that.
That's right. Okay, so if you don't mind putting that on the list for us to see if there's something we can do in regards to those semis on Poplar Wood too. Okay.
We could always put in spike strips.
I've got a few comments.
Sure.
I know I spoke with Tom before, I read, ran for council requesting a three-way stop out there, and I think Tom came out and did a, a study, and it didn't meet the study for a three-way stop at Foxland and Poplar Wood. However, they did come out, try to move a mailbox, and the site distance is still an issue looking to the right if you're turning left onto Foxland. They did improve the pavement so the buses could make that turn. And I also talked to Dave, so I think part of the corridor study, Tom and Dave, correct me if I'm wrong, there's going to be some improvements proposed to Poplar Wood at Alma Ville Road as part of that Alma Ville Road corridor study. And so, and Mayor, you've heard me before, I ran complaining about the PepsiCo, you know, facility out there. I knew it was going to add traffic. It's adding traffic. Traffic's horrible out there, but I think we're moving in the right direction with the corridor study to try to address some of that. And, you know, maybe Dave or Tom could speak on that.
Well, we all got a copy, everybody got a copy of the corridor study last week or the week before, I can't remember, and that was Poplar Wood, Foxland, that seminary area was in that traffic study, so.
Yeah, I know one of the improvements that was in that corridor study, we have on the agenda tonight, the new faci, that new gas station, one of the requirements that that developers got to put in is extending that right-turning lane, which was also in the corridor study. So that's one way that in light of being able to do, you know, a whole widening or a whole big project, we can do some things that might help ease congestion. So I think it's important to have that corridor study handy so that when we're looking at those developments, we can incorporate those things.
I'm thinking that whole area, some pavement during the springtime, overlays and striping would just go a long way of seminary. I don't know if you've driven down seminary from where the county stopped their new pavement. It's, it's pretty rough from that point to that intersection out Alma Ville Road. So I think some of those improvements along with the symbol sign for, and, and his children, they have neighborhood friends, and I bring my truck out down through there, and I, I try to be considerate. It's loud, I know, but, you know, I'm not, I'm not going over the speed limit, so. So anyway.
So with the new police presence, we're not going to be pulling you over, are we? Are we?
When I came here this evening, there was a policeman parked at the church entrance, but I'm, I'm thinking some pavement at those intersections and striping will go a long way.
Tom, could you-
And we did talk about the, at the time, the stop signs. There's only one stop sign, and that's going in, but I've been over there recently and I had this conversation with Dave as well, and I didn't realize that Mr. Smith was going to be on the agenda for tonight. But I see where there's some safety issues as it relates to going onto Foxland or to-
Site distance.
Yes, and so possibly a three, make that a three-way, because right now it's just the stop sign going in, and the, the street going across is not a stop sign. And it's called, I think that's a safety issue, and I know we've looked at it, but-
They did, they did look at that and said that, but, I mean, I think if we're going to look at just that one, we may want to look at that entire area that's out there. And I'm talking on the other side of the school, that whole area, but I think to do that, we're probably also going to have to get the school board looking at their internal stuff in regards to traffic there too. So I mean, if we're going to do it, I just think we need to do all of it.
Well, it, it's, it's, there is school traffic there, but I think when I was talking to Charles and Tom before I ran, there was a comment made that maybe we need to look at opening the gate on the school to bring it down Foxland. And I can tell you, you'll have an uprising if that, if that occurs.
But I guess here's, here's my thing with that. What if the study shows that?
Yeah.
If, if the study shows that that's the best traffic pattern, how do we go against-
For, for the school or for the existing residents of Smyrna?
For both, for both, for traffic in general.
Okay, if we're going to do it there, you know, we got, Steve, you've got a subdivision that they said no about the connection to the condos. I mean, there are several areas if we're going to do that. All I'm trying to say, let's improve the situation, not make it worse.
And I don't disagree, but I'm just saying if we do a study and it shows that-
I won't agree to that, no, no.
But-
No.
So you want to do the study if it, if we agree to it?
Yeah, yeah. Well, I'm just telling you where I stand on it, you know.
So I guess I'm a little confused in that-
No, there's no confusion. We're asking you to pave, or this city to pave the intersection and stripe it, make it more, you know, more presentable now. We're not asking to open the gate on Foxland.
But that wasn't what, that you said if a traffic study needed to be done, and we said if a tra, if a traffic study was done for all of that out there, and it showed that that needed to be opened-
Well, let's do the traffic study, then discuss it. Let's not-
And I'm okay with that, but I don't think we all up here can say, if it said that, that we couldn't do that.
Yeah, yeah. Well, I think that's a county decision too, about opening the gate.
And that's why I said we need to get the county, if we get a traffic study out there, but I just want the, I just want those that are out there, that live out there, to understand, if we're going to look at all of it, we've got to look at all of that, and that could be something that came out of it. So.
Yeah, okay.
Okay.
So Tom, my question was, you obviously don't have to answer this right now, because you probably don't have it, but, excuse me, could you send us maybe after this meeting the where Seminary, Foxland, not necessarily Foxland, Poplar Wood Seminary, where they are on the repaving list?
Okay.
Where they're, where they're scheduled in the future? Because I, I'm sure they're on the list somewhere, but how far out, and if, if there's something, you know, if it's, if we've got a problem where we've got some ground breaking or asphalt breaking up or something, maybe we need to move them up the list, but just curious where they are in the process.
Okay.
They may already be scheduled for spring or something already, I don't know.
All right, yeah, I'll let you know.
Okay.
Thank you.
So second on our list is Patrick Bouchain, and he wants to discuss item A three that's on our agenda under new business, which is consideration of an ordinance amending the text of the Smyrna Municipal Zoning Ordinance, Article Four, Section Four Point Zero Seven Three, Minimum Lot Area and Frontage Requirements Within a Planned Development. If you'll give us your name, address, and if you live in the town limits, please.
Good evening, Council. My name's Patrick Bouchain, sixty-six, fourteen Lee Road in Smyrna outside the city limits. For the last six years, prior to that, fourteen years, in the town of Smyrna at three oh three Orford Drive. I watched the December tenth council meeting and Kevin Riggsby's presentation with all the changes and discussion around the improvements to the PRD building ordinances. Thank you all so much for working so hard on that, and to the planning department and the planning commission that also played a role. Those are very positive improvements, we're all very pleased to see. Thank you. I'm here to speak to the agenda item that the mayor just recited, specifically the amendment that'll be discussed tonight regarding the twenty-foot landscape buffer component of the new PRD regulations when PRD land meets R one or RM land. I'm asking that this amendment be applied to the Hidden Springs subdivision on Lee Road, requiring the twenty-foot landscape buffer along our east property line. They have not submitted for final plat yet and still have several months of excavation utility work to do so, so now is the time to put this in place. This motion for the subdivision was passed on October tenth, the twenty-twenty-three council meeting, and that motion put the responsibility for negotiating a landscape buffer on us, the three landowners, with David Weekly Homes, a corporate five-hundred-million-dollar-a-year home builder. We've had nine meetings with the builder now since July of twenty-twenty-four. Meeting after meeting, they've come back with proposals that were far from being reasonable or acceptable, very poor drawings, and even when they had more than seventy-five feet of additional space in their, in their area, they refused to adjust and work with us on a mutual solution. We've also had one meeting with Mr. Peach and Mr. Riggsby here at the town, then another meeting with Mr. Peach and Mr. Riggsby and Mr. Sullivan at our home, and then one more really big meeting with Mr. Peach, Mr. Riggsby, and several of his staff, Mr. Sullivan, two represent, three representatives from the builder, and us five landowners here at the town. And at this meeting, David Lowery from Weekly Homes said to us, you want to go to court? We have the biggest law firm in Nashville and the resources to back it. And this was witnessed by Mr. Peach and Mr. Sullivan, Mr. Riggsby, and everybody that was at that meeting. We have put so much time and effort into this over the last fifteen months, trying and trying to get a reasonable buffer agreed upon with them, still no agreement. And I can promise you, we are being very reasonable. Given the time, I will gladly come in and present all, everything to you all. We feel this application, the buffer at Hidden Springs is most straightforward now and reasonable approach to solve this problem. It aligns to the new requirements in the new PRDs, and the same should actually apply to Mabel Farms and Cooks, Cooks Lane. Our issue came before theirs, so apply it there as well. We understand this starts with Mr. Riggsby and planning and the planning commission, but please, will you help us? Please help us with this. We ask for the support of the mayor, the entire council, the town manager, and Mr. Peach to help realize this and bring it to fruition.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Jeff, can you talk a little bit about what we're going to be talking about in regards to previously approved PRDs?
Right, so the plats and PRD obviously are two different things. Any of the PRDs that were approved prior to you passing any new ordinances, those PRDs are going to fall under the vesting that they were under at the time, the rules that they were under at the time, and the plan that they were under at the time. In general, obviously, your plats are for public infrastructure, it's your recording device to make sure, one, that you're following your subdivision regulations when they come in. Obviously, that's, you've got two different issues here. We have the, the issue of the PRD that Mr. Bouchain was speaking of, that has been in contention about the, about the buffer. And obviously, that's existed prior to this ordinance, regardless of that disagreement. However, as far as applying this ordinance to any existing PRDs would not be legal. So that would have to fall under what it was originally approved as, and obviously there, there's contention, as, as Mr. Bouchain counted, I've been in several of those meetings where we've tried to get all the parties to, to an agreement, and it just has not happened.
Okay, so one, we can't go back on any PRDs that we have already approved and apply this?
Correct, that's what we, similar to ex post facto, you can't create a law and then go backwards on it.
Okay, and in regards to the issue that Mr. Bouchain and the current developer there, there's, that's between those two, there's really nothing that we can, is that my understanding?
Well, that, number one, as you say, that would be outside of this new ordinance that you're doing. That agreement there was about a buffer, and Councilman Sullivan and I spoke with Bouchain about that, and there's, there's not a lot of clarity to that buffer there, and so that may be an issue that's got, that has to be litigated at some point. But as long as, as long as they are following what was approved at the PRD, the articulable facts of the PRD, then that's, that's what would need to be litigated, is whether they're following that or not.
Okay. Council questions for Jeff on any of this?
I've got, I've got a question. So when that came in to be approved, was it discussed at the council meeting that the developer and the property owner get together to try to resolve that issue?
Yes, I made that motion.
And to come back and present it to council?
No, there was no requirement for them to come back and present it.
So just now, discuss it.
Yeah, it was, it was a stipulation on the PRD that they would need to work out and-
an agreement on the buffer.
And from what I understand, there's a collective access easement that serves three existing property owners and then the development land that straddles the property line.
Roughly, yeah. The property line kind of meanders through it, but yeah, it's roughly.
And now they're encroaching on that access easement, the development, as far as their grading, their retaining laws, and so we just kind of left it, or the council did, hey, y'all go discuss it and work it out.
No, that's not right. That's, that part's a mischaracterization, so we didn't just.
I'm trying to understand what was discussed here.
Let me finish responding.
Yeah, sure, let me finish my question though, then you.
Well, I thought you did, you, you said we left it.
Let me hear, what you got?
No, so as we've said, we've had multiple meetings with both the developer and the homeowners to try to help broker a deal. As Patrick said, I've visited his house a couple of times, I was out there yesterday. I've met with David Lowery many times. We thought at the last meeting that there was a somewhat of a, an agreement possible that was going to be discussed, which included improving the road, working on the water line, some other things, but I don't remember specifically talking about buffering in the last meeting. We talked about the easement a lot, but, and I'm looking at Patrick because I don't remember if we talked about buffering at all. So it was never leave it up to them to figure it out. The intention was that we thought at that point, they were, the developer and the homeowners were discussing well and working well together at that point. We thought that it was going to be an easy thing for them to work out. It went south and it has become a bigger problem. The, the, so we have not just left them alone, we've had several meetings to try to broker that deal. But ultimately, the town has no authority to legally, to impose some of the things that the homeowners are asking for, even if we agree with them and we want them. At this point, we have to count, rely on council to tell us what we can and can't do.
Yeah.
But I thought in, in the planning, when they did bring their plan, their plat, their preliminary plat, that there was an actual buffer that was in the plan or in the plat, and that was even discussed in that commission, that planning commission meeting.
If you're talking about planning, you'll have to ask Mark, he was the only one that was there.
Yes, and, well, I went back and watched it, because I saw that this was going to happen and actually talked with them as well. And that was something that was discussed is that in that preliminary plat, there was an actual buffer that they were supposed to follow, the developer that is, and that didn't happen. But we didn't, we, the council or the commission, didn't know that that didn't happen. So if it was, if it was what they approved and that was in their plat, then they were required to follow that, and if they didn't, then what's our, then what's the recourse then? If they, if it was in there, we approved it, they were supposed to do it and didn't do it, what happens now?
Well, the problem is that there's this, you can't force two parties to agree because if one side never agrees, then you, it's not enforceable, as you, as you know, disagreement. It wasn't a specific when the motion was made, and it's unfortunate, we, and we've discussed that, but when the motion was made, it was for the parties to, that they, I think it was stated something like that they know what will fit them better out there for this, this type of buffer.
And I understand that, and that's what we said in the, in the council meeting.
In the motion, in the motion.
In the council meeting. But then, in the next, in the December planning commission meeting, when the developers brought their preliminary plat for the commission to review, on their plat, they had this buffer. It was approved with this buffer in their plat, but they didn't actually follow that, but that was what was on paper and approved.
I would have to look at that, I haven't seen, I'm not familiar with that.
I don't know about that.
Kevin, do you have any recollection of that? Or is that something we just need to go back and look at?
Yeah, off the top of my head, I would have to go back and look. I haven't looked at that plat in some time.
I do think it's a fair question, and I don't know, Dave, if you're prepared to answer it, but, or Kevin, if, if that's the case, we're, I, I don't know specifically about the plat she's talking about, I've probably seen it at Patrick's house, but I don't know specifically about the buffer piece, because I don't, I don't remember discussing it. But if that's the case, it's in this approved plat, then whose responsibility is it to enforce it and what, what, how do we enforce that?
Yeah, I mean, if, if there is a buffer there shown, then yes, we would, the enforcement would be through the process of, as they develop, they'll have to put it, they'll have to install the buffer, and that's something that would have to be done.
So if it's on that plat, it's a requirement, they have to do it, and we are the enforcers of that.
Sure. If, if there was a flash, if there's a buffer shown, then they, then they, it's a ten-foot wide, thirty feet, twenty feet, whatever it is, and they'll have to, they'll have to install it.
Can you look at that tomorrow and just send us out an email and let us know? Great.
Yeah.
Okay. Council, any other questions for Jeff? Okay, so we have quite a, we have a couple others that are also wanting to speak on the twenty-foot or on the buffer requirement, and you are more than welcome to still come up to speak if you'd like to do that, or after hearing what we're going to look at tomorrow, we can email you to let you know that, but whatever you choose. So our next one on the agenda is Dawn Bouchain to also discuss item A three on the agenda.
Hi, my name's Dawn Bouchain. I live at sixty-six, fourteen Lee Road with Patrick. We're in the county. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight and for all your work on the, the building requirement changes. Now, I got to change all this up because you all talked about a lot of things, but I can address because I just watched it last night. The October tenth, twenty twenty-three town council meeting, Mr. Sullivan made a motion for final approval of the Hidden Springs subdivision. The motion passed with several components, including, quote, "Request that the developer continue to work with the homeowners on buffering options and to come to an agreement that works for them." David Lowery from Weekly Homes spoke at that meeting. He assured the council, quote, "We are going to do some combination of fencing and/or burn landscaping, more than willing to work with them." We left that October meeting with confidence of council and town support that the motion was passed specifically regarding the buffer. The planning commission, which you all are questioning right now, approved preliminary plat on twelve-three, twenty twenty-three. No one reached out to us. There was no collaboration between Weekly Homes and us. Comments were made during that planning commission meeting that it was a robust buffering plan. It only spans twenty-five percent of the boundary. Open space shown on preliminary plat was to leave the natural tree line in place, yet in July twenty twenty-four, when they started excavation, the first thing that was removed was the majority of that tree line. Despite what the builder has presented to the planning commission, our discussions with the builder did not begin until July twenty twenty-four, which was seven months after preliminary plat was approved. So even though the builder is saying they worked with us to bring this together, they presented it, it was approved, it did not include our input. One of the first meetings with the three homeowners in Weekly Homes, David Lowery, the same person standing here at this podium, is now standing on our property line. He told us, we can do whatever we want to do, we have the approval of the town of Smyrna to build, we're doing you a favor by meeting with you. Some of the council members, as you all have discussed, have witnessed the interactions between us and Weekly Homes and have tried to come to a collaboration. To this day, no agreement has been reached. Even though it was in the motion for approval of this subdivision, this fifteen-month battle is what we've been facing on our property line still. And I've heard what you said legally, but I'm just asking if you all will still help us.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Sorry, can I ask one clarification, Dawn? You mentioned, you said ten, ten, twenty-four, we did the initial approval, which I made that motion.
Ten, ten, twenty-three.
Twenty-three, okay. Yeah, that's what I was confused about.
That's the council meeting that it was approved, yeah.
That's it, perfect.
All right.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, Stephen Taylor?
Good evening. Stephen Taylor, sixty-six, twenty Lee Road, county resident, lived in Smyrna, consider myself a city boy, so. I am, I don't want to waste too much time with the, the ordinance, it's a long, long sentence, but I'm here to echo my neighbor's request. We thank you guys for taking this into consideration in this amendment that you guys have put forward, it, I think for all future developments in communities, it's going to eliminate all this back and forth that we've had to deal with. And as well, just the overall, overall well-being of all the parties, because we've invested so much time and, and energy into these discussions with no resolution to date. Before the Mabel Farms annexation request, there was a group of, there was a group of concerns around the annexation and buffers for that development. Before that, there was a smaller group, and that was us. And we voiced the same concerns and several voting members agreed that, yes, the landscaping buffer was needed. You know, that helped eliminate concerns in terms of just privacy and boundaries and safety, and I think we all voiced those concerns in that initial request and, and council meeting, and we were hopeful that it was, what was said in that meeting was going to be fact, and, you know, we've continued to have to deal with, working towards a solution, and, and like we've said, with still no solution. You know, considering what you guys are proposing tonight in terms of this amendment, in, in terms of the twenty-foot landscape buffer, we're just asking for you guys to help us. I know Mr. Peach's comment about changing something, and I, I've talked to Patrick and those guys about that. There's, there's been several changes to this plan as well. I think there's been amendments to this plan. What was presented the first, in that first meeting is not, I think what was approved by the guy, in, in the second meeting for planning, but what we thought we were getting was what was presented to you guys the first, first reading for the, for the, for the annexation. Again, we're just asking for help from you guys to, to provide this buffer. Again, I think there's going to be changes, I think there's a final planning commission for plating, and I'm sure based on just the, the way that retention pond looks, they're going to have to change something there, so I think that might constitute something that looks at, looking into all of this in terms of their amendments to this amendment. Thank you guys for your time.
Thank you.
Jeff, to clarify something Mr. Taylor said, what we approve at the PRD has to be what moves forward unless they, unless there are substantial changes that then have to come back to us for, or go back through planning and then come to us for approval.
That'd be a PRD amendment.
Right.
If it was those types of substantial. Did you catch what, what planning commission meeting?
Twelve, twelve-three, twenty-three.
It's December seventh, that's the actual.
December seventh.
Yeah, the dates weren't matching up to me when I was looking.
Okay, so December seventh. But for any amendments, they have to come back. They can't just.
That would be substantial.
Substantial, right, okay.
I guess, I got, I got one more question, Jeff, and I realize we're probably in where there's no legal precedence, but I did include, and they're right, I did include in the motion that a buffer would be negotiated and instructed, but that, that they would have to agree on something. And I realize we can't make two parties agree, I get all of that, but is there some sort of argument that since they can't agree, then we're going to impose the standard? I mean, the, the PRD was not approved without a buffer. It was approved with a buffer that they have to agree on. I agree with them, fifteen, eighteen months into this, they don't have an agreement.
So is there no buffer at all? Is that what this?
Well, there isn't today, there's very little. I was out there last night, there's about three feet of what I would call brush piled up along maybe the property line. I think it's actually, I don't know, I don't even think it's in the property line. I, I think it's kind of over, yeah, so, but yeah, there's nothing there, the only, yeah, there's no, there's nothing. If you go far enough in, there's still a few trees left that they haven't cleared out, but there's, I mean, you can see right through them, there's no protection.
When you and I, I were out there, it was almost like forest.
Yeah, that, it's been cleared out a lot since then.
It's totally changed.
Yeah, it's, so now when you turn in that driveway, all the way up to the hills, pretty much wide open.
So, I mean, obviously, there's things that you need to review, Kevin needs to look at, Dave, I know you're going out to the site with Jerome tomorrow, so can you all look at to see if even what Steve was talking about?
Sure.
If there's something.
If we could get a solution to this, everybody would be happy.
Yeah, I mean, we didn't agree, we didn't, we didn't put, you know, to the point, e-, even if the plat's only showing this twenty-five percent of the line has a buffer, that wasn't in the amendment, that wasn't in the, the approval, right? We didn't say buffer half or a quarter or up. It, it was a buffer along the whole property line. So even if the plat was approved with only twenty-five percent, that's not what we agreed to in council meeting. So I kind of, I kind of see in that argument, I mean, I agree with them, that there's, the intention was that it had a buffer, and it's, and I don't think it does.
Jerome?
Yeah, I, I think that raises the question of two issues. What, what did the planning commission bring to the council and approve? And then also, if they come back in for an amendment on their own, can an amendment to require the buffer then?
Yeah, I agree with that. I think, absolutely, if we could get, I would think, if we get Weekly Farm, Weekly Homes to submit an amendment that includes the buffer, then of course.
No, he's meaning if they come back in for any amendment at all, then do we have the, can we come back and require something at that point? So can you?
Yeah, I think if you do an amendment, that opens up everything new.
Take care of looking at all this.
I will.
Actually, can you just go out there and build a buffer?
I wish I could remember the plat, but I, I don't remember that being the issue before. I didn't remember that. Remember the, the.
It didn't come back to council, so.
Right.
It would have been, I'm assuming what that means is Kevin or planning or whomever didn't recognize it as significant changes, right? Because it didn't come back to council.
No, but it was even discussed, like Tim actually made comments about the fact that it was a robust buffer. He said that at that planning commission meeting, so it was, it's obvious that he, they noticed it, it was on there.
Yeah.
But that wouldn't have come back to us anyway.
No.
Right, that's, that's the correct process, it wouldn't have come back to us anyway, so.
But it was there when they approved it, yes.
Yeah, okay.
I guess the part I'm confused about is somebody said that that buffer was only twenty-five percent of the property line, and that was not what we approved in October. So if the, no matter how robust it was, it's only twenty-five percent of the property line.
Right.
It's not robust enough.
Well, so Dave, y'all gather together and discuss tomorrow or at some point?
You will, I'll be out there to check it out myself.
Great.
There have been no amendments to this since it came to us the first time. Isn't that right?
Kevin, there's no amendments.
There was one very moderate amendment, because there was a cemetery that they discovered that they weren't, didn't have on the original plan, so they had to reroute.
Was it an amendment or was it a change from first reading to second reading?
No, this was just, this was after it was approved, and they, they basically, the very northern piece of it, they had to rearrange some of the roadways to go around, and they moved where the road stuff was going to the north to avoid a cemetery. It didn't change the overall number of units.
So it didn't come back to us?
It didn't come back to us, it was, they, they, I have the authority to amend if it, meeting some certain criteria, and one of those things is if there's engineering or other circumstances that are not perceived at the time of the pot approval, we can tweak things as long as it doesn't change more than ten percent of the lots on the site.
And you talked about that in that planning commission meeting on December the seventh. You did.
Okay.
And when I look at the, what was presented at, at planning commission, there's no discussion as far as in the notes that I see just yet about the buffering issue other than removing landscape from drainage easements, that's the only thing that I see.
Okay.
We'll go back and work.
Okay, so Melissa, would you like to speak? Melissa Taylor? No? Okay. Teresa FitzCharles?
Hi, I'm Teresa FitzCharles. I live at one oh eight Hutcheson, and I am in Smyrna City Limits. However, I still own sixty-five eighty-six Lee Road, and that's what I'm coming to talk about. I do want to, as, as we hear, and I'm hearing this talk, it might help to explain too that at one time, the retention pond was planned, there was a outline, it was painted on our easement that I used to get in and out of my property, where they were going to put the retention pond.
I remember that.
And, and so it, it, it didn't get just moved, like, it got way moved. And, and so there was a, there had to be amendment there, or I'm not sure of the legal jargon, but there should have been something done when it got moved. Out of, it would have taken our water lines out, it would have taken our mailboxes out, but it had to get moved over, and it had, I think they deepened it as well. But, but that was, gosh, I think that was in July, the twenty-four, first of August, when, when we came home to see the spray paint where the retention pond was going to sit in our easement. And that's, that's the problem, that's how it's been this whole time. Every time there's. Every time there's that we've had, I think Patrick said nine, I feel like it's been 100 because they are so long, nothing gets resolved. We can't, and I know we've talked about agreement, all we've ever asked for is stay out of our easement, give us a buffer. That is all. And I know when you made the motion that we worked together, it was because we came in and never opposed the subdivision. We never, we were never going to. We wanted to work with the developer. And this is, I swear I got gray hair from this now, because it's just nonstop for 15 months. I feel like things were getting changed on the reg, I watched one meeting, and so I think the planning commission asked, what about their easement? And it was said, well, they've worked it out with the residents. It's never been worked out with us. We've got, historically, it's recorded that we have 50 feet, and so we can add family homes to our property, and that the easement can handle the traffic. If you take half of our easement, then it can't handle any more traffic than the three homes that's on it. They, the developer, the things that they list that they've helped us with are things they broke. Nothing we ever asked for. We've only asked to stay out of our easement, give us a buffer. And we asked for the buffer because they don't want to look at our houses anymore, and we want to look at theirs. We're county, and they're city, we have different rules, and there should be a defining line that says, we're county and you're city, and we have different rules. You know, it's, it's, we ask, we've not come to any agreement, and so when I ask, can we please go back, is because we have not come up with an agreement. There's nothing been put in writing, and there's nothing any of us have agreed on, so the minimum should be the 20-foot buffer, just as standard.
Thank you.
One thing you just brought up is the encroachment on the easement, and I guess the numerous water line breaks that go, go to the houses. I know that's, that's been an issue as well.
Okay, so these are all of the public comments under, for this item, so Dave, if once you have discussion with staff, if you can either email us, however you want to handle it, whether it's email or at our next workshop for us to have discussion, whichever way, and I know it may take a little time to review the meetings and those sort of things, so.
Sure.
Okay? Perfect.
So Ms. Reasonover, she is here, and she had signed up to speak as well. She is feeling under the weather today, and asked if she could defer her time to one of the hills to speak. That would be, I asked Jeff, he said it would be up to you guys as a body if you would allow her to defer her time. I think Mr. Hill wants to come up here and see if he can beat my timer.
Are you all okay with Mr. Hill taking her time?
I am.
Yes, fine.
Okay. If you'll come forward, state your name, address, and if you live in the city limits, please.
Ken Hill, 5007 Rock Springs Road. And I didn't plan to speak tonight, so.
And are you in the city limits?
I am in.
Thank you.
The city limits. First off, I'm going to say, instead of I, we, because this is speaking for several, want to say thank you to both the council, the planning commission, and the planning department for this proactive, quick response to my initial conversation in front of y'all to see the speed at which you've moved through to get some sort of resolution for the many issues that we had brought forth. So I want to say thank you very much to y'all. Would like to ask that the council and planning commission continue to do the good work, ensure that these new developments, when they're going to PRDs, and the new standards going forward, that the requirement specifically to the buffer, the 20-foot buffer, when it's coming from a PRD and it meets up to an R1 or an RM, this buffer has been discussed, and I haven't seen the latest language, where it speaks of 20-foot. I know in the Maple Farms development, we were able to negotiate trees within that buffer. And I've been watching the council meetings and the planning meetings ever since, whether I'm not here or I'm on TV, and when this subject comes up, one of the things that I have not seen put into the language of this buffer, and it seems to be a hot topic, is recommendations that if there is natural foliage in that buffer, it remains, it's not to be disturbed, and if it is lightness, or it's thin, like in Maple Farms, they're adding two trees per lot. What I would like to see, if it's possible to add in there, the language needs to state the height of these trees, recommend no less than 12 feet, so that we're not getting a little two-foot shrub, and we're going to wait 10 years for this thing to be of any And the quantity of the trees in this buffer. With an addition outside the buffer, within the language of PRDs, is we're seeing so many trees, when they come in, they clear cut this entire place. My past life, as a contractor, as a builder, in other municipalities, it was a requirement, when you cut a tree down, it is to be replaced. I haven't yet seen that language, I don't know if it's in there or not, but I highly recommend that. So at least we're getting roadways and concrete and asphalt, let's keep the beauty that we have in the town of Smyrna with these trees, but I would highly recommend put a minimum height requirement.
Three minutes, Mayor.
I think I got it all. Thank you all.
You tried, Ken. Esther, can I respond a little bit? So, Mr. Hill and Lisa, thank you, but let me respond to you a little bit. I was at the planning commission when we talked about this, and last week, we specifically actually discussed not putting that language in, what specific types or type of buffer we were going to require, because in some cases, it may be open land to open land, and if there's, then we might want a berm, or we may want evergreens, like you said, 12-foot evergreens, or we may want to keep existing trees. So we, the way it's worded is pretty much 20-foot buffer is required, but planning has the ability to, to make that requirement, what type of buffer it is, based on the PRD individually. So I agree with you exactly what you're saying, and you're right, in Lisa's case and the Reasonovers' case, there was existing trees that we wanted to protect and make sure they were there. In some cases, it's, you know, pasture land, budding pasture land, and there's nothing there. So we might want to have a berm with evergreens on top, or we may want to have something different. So that's the reason we didn't put it in there, we didn't get that specific, because we didn't want to lock ourselves in to, you know, well, it's got 12 evergreens per acre, so you can't make me change anything, right? And so that was kind of where we were going with that.
We will move on to item two tonight, which is, I will call our meeting to order, and yes, wait.
Say something real quick.
No, I'm done.
Normally on public comments, we don't do a whole lot of discussion about what's said and going back and forth, and I have real concern about the precedent that we're setting here. I think a lot of people tonight got special treatment, and I just think that we need to be cautious about the conductivity of the meeting and how it goes forward.
Jeff, anything you want to address with that?
Not with the councilman, I do not.
Okay.
I think that is, this body's prerogative on what you want to do. I understand what you're saying.
So do you want us to have discussion on that?
No, ma'am.
I understand where you're coming from, but I also think that it is important, if there are times that we can answer questions, that we do that to citizens, but I do understand your concern. I think somewhat tonight, we've kind of worked some things out to where we're looking at things. Raquel brought up the planning commission that we're going to go back and review in regards to buffer, so I hear what you're saying, but I also think if there is a way for us to answer questions or address concerns, that I think that's what we're here to do, so.
Thank you, ma'am.
Okay. Okay, I have called the meeting to order. Chaplain York, if you're still with us and not asleep, would you come forward and do prayer, and Todd Spearman's going to do our pledge. You'll all stand with us.
Let's pray together. Father Lord, we thank you for this new year, new challenges, new opportunities that face us. Or we do pray for our leaders, we ask you to provide wisdom, Father, that you would walk with them day by day, or we're reminded in scripture that you taught us about the gift of administration, how to lead the people out of the fire, out of the danger, and bring direction. And I pray, Lord, you'll continue to provide that for the council, for all those who lead our city. Or we pray for our first responders tonight. We not only pray for protection, but we pray that you'll bless their lives. Lord, bless every employee of this city, and help us all to do our best to serve each other and be good neighbors. We ask this in your name. Amen.
Amen.
Ladies and gentlemen, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks, chaplain. Thanks, Todd. Amber, if you'll do roll call.
Yes, ma'am. Councilman Dempsey?
Here.
Councilwoman Peoples?
Here.
Councilman Cole?
Yes, ma'am.
Councilman Short?
Here.
Councilman Sullivan?
Here.
Vice Mayor Atkins?
Here.
Mary? Here. Okay, item four is approval or corrections of the minutes of the December 10th, 2024 regular meeting and January 7th, 2025 workshop meeting of the town council. Jeff, have you looked over these?
Yes, in order as to form.
Perfect. Counsel, any additions or corrections on these? Seeing none, do I have a motion?
To approve, there.
A motion, do we have a second?
A second.
Motion as second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item five, correspondents and communications, anything tonight, Dave, Amber? Awards or recognitions? No? Okay. Item seven is our consent agenda. These are items that don't necessarily need individual discussion and can be voted on together, but if there is an item that council wants to pull off and discuss individually, we can do that. I do like to read these items, so those here in the audience and those at home know what we're voting on. So item A is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute an agreement with Rockwell Automation for the procurement of software consulting and training to support the work order inventory and maintenance processes for the multiple town departments. Item B is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute the proposal with Sessions Paving Company for the construction of the Washington Street at CSX project. Item C is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute the proposal with Hayworth Meyer Bowlin Professional Engineers LLC for construction engineering and inspection for the Washington Street at CSX project. Item D is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute the proposal with Hayworth Meyer Bowlin Professional Engineers LLC for the right-of-way survey and roadway design for the Ammerville Road project. Item E is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute the proposal with Rogers Group Incorporated for the construction of the right lane addition to State Route 102 Nissan Drive project. Item F is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute an agreement with Pyro Shows relative to the town's annual fireworks show for 2025. Item G is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute the annual service agreement for, with area filter service for the membrane filtration system at the water treatment plant. Whew, item H is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute an agreement for locating services with USIC. And item I is consideration and authorization for, of a list of items to be auctioned through online surplus sale with GovDeals. Counsel, is there anything you want to pull off and discuss individually?
Mayor, I know I'm not a council member here, but I would like to pull H if I could. We did discuss this during the workshop, and I projected that we may have an issue with contract negotiations, so I need to just discuss that with the council.
Okay, so pulling H off, is there anything else we need to discuss individually? Seeing none, do I have a motion to approve all items other than item H on consent agenda?
So move.
Have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion as a second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Consent agenda passes, except for item H, and that is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute an agreement for locating services with USIC, and we have that on our desk. So are you taking this, or is?
I'll go ahead and let, Mike's our, I don't want him to walk for nothing.
You don't want to steal his thunder?
Yeah.
Okay, got it. Like that blue tie.
Thank you very much. So USIC had 10 pages of exceptions. So in talking to them, when we did this three years ago, they had quite a few exceptions as well. We got it all worked out to benefit both parties. They'd originally said the exceptions are basically the same as last time, which they are not. So I reached out to them, said, hey, we will incorporate your pay changes, you know, your increases per year, if we were to extend it past one year, we're comfortable with that. We had a good agreement in place that benefited both parties. They came back and said, no, we want all the exceptions. I'm not at all comfortable with that, especially some of the exceptions that are there, so what I'm recommending is that we go with the second bidder, which was in the bid tab, which is benchmark for approval.
Okay. Counsel, questions on this?
One more thing, if I may. Mr. Santucci and I have been discussing the locating services, and are looking at a plan to possibly do something different in the future, maybe bring that back in-house in some manner or form to save some money, but we're not there yet, we're working on that.
The only thing I would say to that is, I know when we moved from doing it in-house out is, a lot of that had to do with time of our employees, so I just hope y'all will look at that when you're taking that into consideration. Questions on the second bidder? Was there anything you all had questions on with that?
How long is their term? Is it a one-year as well?
Yes, ma'am.
Other questions? Then do I have a motion to approve benchmark?
So move.
A motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion as second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Okay, we'll move on to old business. Tonight, we have seven public hearings. Our first item is a public hearing in consideration for resolution relative to a plan of services for property located on Tax Map 54, partial 18.00. Kevin?
Yes, Mayor and Counsel, this first item is a plan of services for the annexation, which is your first item on your agenda. This does put in writing and detail the services the town would be provided, would be providing upon the effective date of the annexation of the property, which would, in this case, would be all services except for water, which would be provided by a consolidated utility district. The planning commission did hold a public hearing, did review this plan of services, and did recommend approval. Staff would also recommend approval.
Counsel, questions on the plan of services for this development? Seeing none, I'll go to the public to see if there's anyone here to speak for or against the plan of services for this development. Seeing no one, we'll close public hearing, go to counsel for a motion.
So move.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion as a second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes. Our second public hearing is consideration of an ordinance relative to the annexation and PRD zoning of property located on Tax Map 54, parcel 18.00 requested by Jared Cunningham with Catalyst Design Group on behalf of the Rose C Neil Revocable Trust containing 29.79 acres, the properties located on Rocky Fork Ammerville Road. Kevin?
Yes, Mayor and Counsel, this is an annexation request. It was, actually, came before you all in November, and was deferred to December for first reading, and then passed in December. The revised PRD, which was approved in December, is same as what is before you tonight, which is, it's 83 single-family lots, it's on 29.79 acres, which is a gross density of 2.79 units per acre, which is a net density of 4.14 units per acre. Mr. Dempsey? Yeah. About 9.72 acres of the 29.79 are supposed to be open space, so. The proposed minimum lot dimensions did get revised, they're now all at minimum of 7,000 square feet, with some also 9,000 and 11,000 square feet, so it is in keeping somewhat with our, the proposal's new changes, not completely, but it is. but it is moving in that direction. The lots that do abut Saddle Grove, which is the adjoining R3 zone development, are all at least 9,000 square feet. Now, the house sizes would range from 2,400 to 3,500 square feet, which is an increase from what it was originally looked at, 1,600 to 3,500. Houses would be finished with brick, stone, and concrete siding, with the added requirements that any roof-facing elevation fronting Rocky Fork Ammival Road would be entirely brick. Access is shown from Rocky Fork Ammival Road as well as a connection to the Step Street that is within the Courtyard of Stewart's Creek Development, which is an adjoining development, which that road has been constructed. All requirements of the town with regard to setbacks, parking, and open space would be met. Proposed amenities include walking trails, a covered gazebo, seating areas, and a totlot playground area. The planning commission did recommend approval of this annexation and zoning, and staff would also recommend approval.
Questions for Kevin on this? Kevin, just to be clear, so that those that may not have been following along, we talked, you kind of said that they are moving towards meeting our requirements. They're moving towards meeting the requirements that'll be in place as of April 1.
Correct.
Right. So I just want to make sure people in the public understand.
Yeah, this is not, they were not required to, but as part of the discussion, they did make some changes to the plan to get it at least closer to it.
Okay.
I know, Mayor, we discussed this at the work session, but again, you know, roadway improvements to that area. I know there's either Charles or Tom's been working on that. But I can't support these high-density developments without, you know, some kind of clear plan on what we're doing with the infrastructure, so.
Okay. Any other comments before moving?
I've got a question. I mean, you know, along those lines, and I understand where Jerome's coming from, but I mean, Kevin, roughly, any idea of how much impact fees they'll be paying on this?
I don't have the total. I can't tell you that they're.
Breakout.
Fifty, the impact fees, currently it's like almost $1,500 per house. That's road, parks, and public safety combined. So $1,500 times 83. So that's $100,000 or whatever.
So I mean, they do contribute to the roads to a degree, but I think that's, you're looking for more than that, correct, Jerome?
I'm trying to, yeah. We're, I know, we've discussed that whole area out there. You know, it's becoming very congested and the condition of the road. And I know me and Dave's had some discussion with Charles about what's being proposed, but I'd just like CS get ahead of the curve instead of behind the curve. And I do realize impact fees are being paid.
Okay. Other comments or questions?
Okay. We did talk about the fact that there's the difference in the gross versus the net. And just to confirm, the unused portion of this, they're not using it for anything, no walking trails or anything because of the typography, correct?
The southernmost portion of this, yes. No, and the area in the front, of course, you got a detention pond in there, but there's also some areas toward the kind of northern part of that that there would be amenities in those areas.
Yes, but not in the.
That southern piece of it would not really be used for anything, other than just being open space.
Okay.
Okay. Any other comments or questions? Okay, then we will move to the public to see if there's anyone here to speak for or against this item. Seeing no one, we'll go to the council for a motion.
Make a motion to approve.
For motion to approve? Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion at a second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed?
Aye.
Okay. Item C is consideration of a resolution in memorandum of ordinance 24-37 relative to the annexation and PRD zoning of property located on Tax Map 54, parcel 18.00. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Thanks. Okay, item D, is our next public hearing, which is consideration of a resolution relative to a plan of services for property located on Tax Map 50J, group E, parcel 15.00. Kevin?
Yes, this is the plan of services for the annexation of a tract of land on Neil Avenue. If I can get to it. There we go. Again, this plan of services does detail the services that would be provided by the town upon effective date of the annexation of the property. Again, in this case as well, it's all services except for water, which would be provided by a consolidated utility district. The planning commission did hold a public hearing, did review this plan of services, and did recommend approval. Staff would also recommend approval.
Questions for Kevin on this one? Okay, then we'll go to the public to see if there's anyone here to speak for or against the plan of services for this property? If you'll come forward, and if you'll just state your name and your address, and if you live inside the city limits.
Jennifer Colbertson. I live at 122 Neil Avenue on down the street.
Okay.
What is this going to do to us on down the street?
Okay.
Is there going to be a reason for them, for the city to want to come further into the county? And what is that going to do to affect us?
We cannot come in, we cannot annex you into the city unless you ask to be annexed by us.
Okay. I didn't know. Don't know that.
That's exactly right. Absolutely. That's right.
I appreciate it.
Absolutely. Anyone else to speak for or against this item? Seeing no one, we'll close this public hearing and go to council for a motion.
Mayor, I've got, I know you called for question, but we discussed the buffer, I think, at the work session, and I just need some clarification on that.
So the buffer you're talking about along?
We didn't know if one is going to be required, one was along the industrial property, you know, to be consistent with Belmont.
Right, yeah. We would look at that when a plat gets done. We wouldn't automatically require them to plan anything, but if they develop the property at all, which is my understanding is they're going to divide this and build another house there, then we would look at requiring it with the plat. Yes, sir.
Other questions? Okay, then this item is for the plan of services. So item D, do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Do I have a second? Motion at a second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Item E is consideration of an ordinance relative to the annexation and R3 zoning of property on Tax Map 50J, group E, parcel 15.00, requested by Proverbs Build Homes containing 89 one-hundredths of an acre. The property is located at 139 Neil Avenue. Kevin?
Yeah, this is the annexation request for this property at 139 Neil Avenue. It's about 2,500 feet north of the intersection with Ammival Road, but 250 feet south of the intersection with Cloverland Drive. Land use plan would support medium density, single-family residential in this area. Surrounding zoning is the Belmont PRD to the south, as well as I-2 to the east there in town, and RM in Rutherford County. CUD has indicated they can meet the fire flow requirements in this area. In addition to the annexation of the property, the planning commission did recommend annexation of about 240 linear feet of the existing right-of-way of Neil Avenue in front of this property. And that was per staff's recommendation. There is an existing house, as I stated earlier, on this property, already existing, so we would be annexing one house in addition to the property. The planning commission did review this, did recommend approval. Staff would also recommend approval.
Okay. Questions or comments for Kevin on this? Okay, seeing none, we'll go to the public to see if there's anyone here to speak for or against this item. Sure. If you'll state your name and address again, just so Ms. Amber has it.
Jennifer Colbertson. And I, again, I live down at 122. So they're wanting to put apartments there?
No.
I couldn't understand what you were saying. Yeah, I know there's one house there.
They're wanting to add one more.
There's not room for that there. And I've lived on that road for 31 and 1/2 years.
So Kevin, do you want to address that based on the lot?
And that's, the proposed or requested zoning is R3, which is a 10,000-square-foot lot size. This is about nine-tenths of an acre. So that's roughly 30, some 35, 36,000 square feet, something like that. So they would meet the zoning requirements with, as far as the road frontage, you have to have at least 75 feet of width for a lot in the R3 zone as well. Most likely, it's at that size because it's on a developed, utilizing a septic system, and that's probably all the dirt that was perked at the time the house was built. So this would be an extension of the sewer to build, to serve those two homes, that home and then the potential new home.
So they are, look, we don't know for sure because they've not told us. Is that correct? Other than just asking to be?
Right. At this time, all they've done, we don't have a plat or anything like that. At this time, we just had a request to be annexed.
And anything like that would have to be put on plat and brought in?
I'm sorry.
Anything like that would have to be platted?
Oh, absolutely.
Checked.
Yeah, they would have to submit a subdivision plat for us to review and meet all the requirements.
But in regards to the current lot size that it is, there would be room for one other?
Just on the north side of the existing house, between those two houses, and then, of course, the neighbor to the north there, there would be, they would meet the requirements for a 10,000 minimum square foot lot, yes.
Anyone else to speak for or against this item? Okay, we'll close this public hearing and go to council for a motion.
I have one question before we go to a motion. Will that plat come to the planning commission? Or since it's a single-family home, will that be required not to?
Typically, we can review a staff up to two lots. So that would be two lots. Mostly probably, because they're also going to have to have some public improvements on this, because they'll be extending the public sewer line. Typically, even if it's only one lot, I do typically take those to the planning commission.
So you will be taking this one to the planning commission?
Yes.
Okay, so if they come wanting to put another house on it, it would go before the planning commission?
It would go before planning commission, yes. It wouldn't necessarily be signs and letters sent out again, but it would have to come to the planning commission for review.
And Kevin, if this were to proceed forward and be approved, this is just kind of a connection to the Belmont subdivision already, anyway. The lot size that you're talking about would still exceed most Belmont lot sizes.
It would be larger than most of the lots in Belmont, yeah. Because those are, some of those are as small as 6,000 or 7,000 square feet.
Okay.
Kevin, Belmont is sewer, correct?
Yes. Yeah, there's sewer at the, right there at that, in the roadway at the end of Neil Avenue.
So if they put another house on there, So would they, if they put another house on there, would be required to tap on the sewer?
That's why they're, that's the only reason they annexed. I mean, they, if they had enough dirt for another septic system, we probably would have never seen them.
Got you.
Because right at that, it's already empty.
Right.
Okay. Do I have a motion?
I make the motion to approve.
A motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion is second, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item F is consideration of a resolution and memorandum of ordinance twenty-five dash two relative to the annexation and R three zoning of property located on tax map fifty J, group E, parcel fifteen. Do I have a motion? Motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Our next public hearing is consideration of an ordinance relative to the rezoning of tax map twenty-eight, parcel thirty-four point zero zero, to go from R four to PRD. It's requested by Abu Bishake. The property requested to be rezoned contains four point three-two acres and is located at six oh eight Rock Springs Road. Kevin?
Yes, Mayor and Council, this is a, a request for rezoning on, at, on Rock Springs Road. There's currently, um, two homes on this parcel, it's about four point three-two acres. Uh, so it's, there's, there's two addresses there, six oh eight and six fourteen. Um, this is just east of Mason Tucker Drive. A land use plan would support medium density, single-family in this area. Surrounding zoning is R four and PRD, which is the Spring Branch Town Homes PRD to the east and north of this property. Those two homes would be removed as a part of this development if it is approved. Uh, this proposed PRD is for ten single-family houses, thirteen town homes, so for a total of twenty-three houses on the four point three-two acres, which is five point three-two, uh, homes or houses per acre. Minimum house size would be fifteen hundred square feet with a two-car garage, would be finished with a mix of brick and concrete siding. Uh, one access point is shown to Rock Springs Road with all units accessing the internal private street. Um, all houses would be sold via horizontal property regime with the HOA owning and maintaining all common areas. A type C landscape buffer is shown along the western property line abutting the existing single-family houses. Um, adequate parking is provided. Uh, proposed amenities include a dog park and a playground. Uh, the planning commission did review this request, did recommend approval, uh, with a couple of conditions. Uh, the, one, the existing tree canopy is required to be preserved as much as possible in that landscape buffer area. The landscaping being added as necessary to be compliant with the type C buffer requirements. And that, uh, the facades of the buildings, which have direct visibility from Rock Springs Road, are required to have additional brick added to include a minimum of the entirety of the first floor. This was discussed, uh, as, at first reading, and then again last week at the workshop. We did receive, uh, yesterday revised, uh, elevations, uh, that do show brick on the first floor of all the units. Uh, those, it was too late, we, we sent revised plans in your packet, and then we got this one again. So, uh, that was, hard copies of that are in front of you there. Uh, basically pages twelve through fifteen are the ones that were changed, and they do show the brick, um, on the first floor of all the units, as well as changed up the siding that we had some concerns about last week as well, to be more of a, what you would expect to see, kind of a board and batten type siding. So... So this is kind of what is proposed now versus what was looked at.
So first floor of brick, first floor of brick?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
And that got changed?
Yes, sir, yeah. But, yeah, and the, and the siding that was on the second floor, that one that we had some concerns about, it got changed as well, yeah.
Yeah, right, yes.
Painted plywood.
Okay. Comments or questions on this?
Kevin, the, and I brought it up, and I know, and we beat the dead horse, but, uh, the, the size of the houses did not change, is that correct?
That is correct.
Which is the fifteen hundred, including the garage, right?
That is correct.
Okay, which is a little smaller than the other, um, condos that are around there. I know it's probably close to the houses on the left-hand side, but on the right-hand side, it's a little, little smaller.
Yeah, the, the minimum in Spring Branch, which is the one directly adjacent to them, the minimum size was fifteen hundred there. They had a kind of a fifteen, fifteen to eighteen hundred on the townhomes, and fifteen to twenty-two is what I may note of on the single-family that's in there. So they did have a maximum shown, but they did have roughly the same minimum.
And I appreciate them looking at the change in the, the outside. I, I wished we'd have seen a little bit of the, of the size of the, of the building as well.
Other comments or questions?
Uh, just to tag on to what Jerry's asking, their development standards are in here, and I'm, I'd be curious to know if that fifteen hundred, in their opinion, includes the garage or not. I know a lot of times when we ask that question, it does, but it really doesn't.
Well, they didn't indicate that it didn't, so I, that's my assumption.
Well, so could we maybe find that out? Because that would be a big difference maker, and as they, as people come in and propose this, wouldn't it be who of us to know if that's garage space or not?
Sure.
So...
And they're, they're here, and they might can answer that when we have a public hearing.
Yeah, I'd love to.
Can answer that question.
Yeah, sure.
Love to.
Just so Ms. Amber can get it in her record, if you'll state name, address, and who you're representing.
Chris McGuire with Huddleston Steel Engineering, twenty-one fifteen Northwest Broad Street, Murfreesboro, Tennessee. Um, we are proposing fifteen hundred square foot. We've not differentiated whether it does or does not include the garage. Um, I, I intend, I mean, what we've sketched on the plans are larger than fifteen hundred square foot, not including the garage, but we do want to provide that flexibility. Um, if the market and the houses adjoining to them are not, I mean, just because they provided a fifteen to eighteen hundred square foot, doesn't mean that they're going to provide an eighteen hundred square foot. So we're probably going to try to provide something similar to what is being currently approved construction plan-wise. I haven't seen those yet, but, uh, our intentions are to look into that and provide a similar-sized product to be marketable to the same type of group. And with these elevations, it'll actually be a little bit, unless they go far from their pattern book, a little bit nicer elevations, a little bit nicer product than what's approved next to us.
Okay.
I'm happy to answer any other questions while I'm...
I need to summarize what you said, because I don't think I followed.
Okay, I apologize. Um, we are proposing fifteen hundred square foot, including the garage.
Including, okay.
Correct.
And the garage is two-car?
Correct.
Which is about four hundred square feet.
Correct. And then, uh, we've got the four-car parking outside. Um, again, what we've got drawn up on the actual site plan view would be larger than fifteen hundred square foot excluding the garage, but I, our client, just depending on what the neighbor's building, we're going to try to build the suit.
So let me ask you a question, because we, earlier on, we had public comment, and there was some vagueness in what was talked about or agreed to. You heard the public comment. I don't want to go there again.
Yeah.
Right?
Well, I would like to say it's fifteen hundred square feet total space, including the garage.
So that's what your proposal would be for the approval? And I think that's what you said at planning.
Correct.
Right. But Jerry brought up the question, and I just wanted to know the difference.
Yeah.
Okay?
Okay. Other questions?
On PRD, it needs to say exactly what it's going to be.
Living space. Living space, I, I think many times we're, I'm getting caught in whether or not garages are included in the living space or not anymore. And, you know, people come to us, and they propose a square footage, and then we think sometimes, in my business, square footage doesn't include a garage space.
Well, and I don't believe in that.
And now it sounds like it's beginning to include garage space, or maybe it has in the past, but...
Well, I don't believe that we called it out as fifteen hundred square foot of livable space. I think we just had a fifteen hundred square foot building.
Well, and that's the language I'm trying to make sure we know what we're doing here.
Yes, sir.
So why don't we make sure that that is an item on our joint planning commission and council meeting, so that we can get exactly what we want?
Not everybody knows the size of the garage, or how big or small it is.
But not only for our, but for when you all bring it to us exactly how we want it to be.
How you want it, yes.
I think we've gone back and forth on this one a couple of times, and, um, you know, I mean, seems kind of straightforward to me, if we don't want garages to count, then let's make a motion that says that.
Well, that's what we're going to talk about in our planning workshop.
No, I understand that, I'm talking about for this PRD.
Oh, well, for this one, he says that it's fifteen hundred square foot, and it doesn't...
And it does include the garage.
It does.
He said it does.
And, yes, and it does include the garage.
And so, okay, well, I'll wait, I'll wait for a motion then.
Okay.
Well, and I want to be careful, too, because, uh, if everything is required to be a certain square footage in our town, I'm not against necessarily having a nicer product, but what I am concerned about is affordable living for those that can't afford it, some of the other products. So how do we meet that? We've talked about that as a council in a workshop. How do we make sure everybody has a right to homeownership that can afford it? So in a subdivision like this, where it backs up to single-family on one side and townhomes on the other, what you're saying is you just want to make sure you stay in that, that market that the other competitor is doing.
Yeah, we don't want to have a weird stick-out thumb where all of a sudden we're...
Well, so let me catch you. Uh, sorry, I'm not trying to catch you. So in the neighboring development, I don't recall a lot of two-car.
There were not as many two-cars.
So, so your market is different, right? It will look different, it will appeal differently.
I believe that the townhomes that we backed to were the two-car product.
That's what you have in here.
Correct.
Right.
So the ones we backed...
But what backs up to it does not, is that what I'm hearing?
Uh, the one that we backed to does have a two-car product. Now they have a one-car product deeper into the development.
Primarily, it's, it's a one-car.
Yeah, but primarily back end decided it's a one-car product. So we tried to match exact footprint of what was next to us, so...
And how big are those, do you know?
I, I haven't seen their construction plans. I mean, they gave a, a range of fifteen to eighteen hundred square feet. I don't recall them calling out whether it was livable space or excluding or including the garages when I reviewed their pattern book, but our intentions are just to provide a similar-type product with, of course, it's slightly nicer elevations, but we, we want to stay in the same price range.
No, I understand. I, I do, I'm just, I want to know what we're, you know, I, I want to know what square footages we're talking about. And I think going forward, we'll put that on planning department to let us know that, if the developer hasn't spelled it out.
To determine that at the, earlier on.
Okay.
Houses on Mason Tucker, on the other side of it, have garages at all? Do you recall?
I think they do.
I think some of them do, maybe all of them.
I think, I think most of them have single cars.
Single car garages.
Primarily single car.
And how big would you say those houses are?
Oh, I, I looked it up. It was anywhere from twelve fifty to twenty-four hundred. It, it varied. If it's two-story, it's twenty-four hundred, and then if it's a single-story, it's about twelve fifty.
And that did not include garage?
Did not include the garage.
And a lot of those are single, are one-car garages, aren't they?
Right. Well, I don't know if they're single-car garage or two.
Thing makes a nice job.
I just looked it up on the tax record.
And you mentioned, I'm sorry, did I interrupt you?
No, I'm good.
Okay. And you mentioned that you've talked to your team of people, that you think their plans are actually bigger?
Yes, yes, they are slightly...
So what's your reluctance, I guess, to bump it up?
Uh, previous experience, where it was just two or three square feet difference, and we just ran out of real estate to make that physically happen. So we'd like to have a little wiggle room. I guess at this point, let's see, they're twenty-five foot wide. It was a twenty-five foot wide product for each townhome, so I really don't see it having any hard time getting fifteen hundred square foot livable space.
Didn't you say earlier that the drawings we have was based on that, fifteen hundred square foot?
Yes, yeah.
So based on what's in the plan, the lot, the sizes are fifteen hundred.
Yeah, and that, they were to match...
Livable.
They were, they were to match the fifteen to eighteen hundred square foot footprint that was adjoining to us. So with them being two floors, and like you said, I mean, four hundred square foot of it being garage...
Well, that's a big bonus room upstairs.
Yeah, I don't, I really don't see it being hard to get that fifteen hundred square foot livable space, but, um, without hard, uh, architectural footprints already laid out by the, uh, developer, um, I'm hesitant to, uh, to restrict him to not include the garage.
Other questions for him? Okay. Thank you very much. So we will go to the public to see if there's anyone here to speak for or against this item. Okay, seeing none, um, I'll close the public hearing and go to council for a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve with the stipulation that the homes be fifteen hundred square feet without the garage included.
Livable.
Livable.
We have a motion to approve with the homes being fifteen hundred square foot minimum.
Second.
Second. Discussion?
Well, there's two product there, so are we talking about both product?
I think they said, uh...
Yes. They're single-family and, and...
Yes.
Is that your motion?
Yes.
Okay.
I've always been under the impression when a PRD comes to us that we know exactly what it's going to be. And that, um...
Can't deviate. And it can't deviate?
And it cannot deviate from it without coming back to us and going through planning also. I mean, and this just seems to be contrary to, to, to where we've always gone with these. And not that I'm necessarily against this one, I think that's all, all okay and everything, but I think it's in the presentation that I have concern. That's all I got.
Okay.
But we talked about this one at length in planning, and, and the first time we saw this as a council. One of the things I think we all liked was the fact that we weren't going to get a total R four subdivision this way. That this was a benefit as a PRD in, as opposed to what currently they could still do. They already have the zoning to do a bunch of duplexes. So we're getting single-family out of the deal, uh, trying to upsize them a little bit to make them a little more valuable, I get it, but that's the reason why I think this PRD made us all look at it a little closer, because it was a better trade-off than what they could go ahead and do right now today.
It fits the area, everything. I mean, there's no, you know, problem with that.
So we have a motion and a second for, to approve but at fifteen hundred square feet of livable square footage on both products. Okay? Any other discussion?
One more. Just make sure that that's minimum. They can certainly build bigger.
And one more. Oh, I, I do want to be careful here, as I mentioned earlier, when we as a body start mandating square footages, we're mandating value and price as well. So we've got, I think we've got to make sure we check ourselves every time we do this to make sure we're not letting everybody in town not be able to achieve homeownership.
But I don't think that's what we're doing. I think we're just asking what it is that we're voting on.
Well, I get it, but, and you're right.
And he also stated he didn't think they'd have any troubles meeting it. So I'm just saying, they're not going to have any trouble meeting it.
And that's why I asked him what's the reluctance, otherwise, you know? But I just want to be careful that every time we have a developer come in, that we're not, um...
I'm just going to be honest with you.
...isolated on square footage necessarily. These people spend a lot of money to make a product that can be marketed and affordable.
Yeah.
And we don't want, I get it, we don't want a bunch of cracker boxes either, right? There's a fine line there of making sure that our community can afford what's being built there, and if not, we end up with a, a bunch of rental instead, and that's not good.
Well, I, I grew up in a house that was about fifteen hundred square feet, and I'm just going to be honest, I, I, I probably won't agree to that, to anything less than that. And I mean, I get it drives the price up, but there's a lot of existing homes out there that would be cheaper, that they could purchase. So I just don't think the new ones have to be the cheapest ones.
I think, um, the discussion also was the, the ground area, you know? He, he just guys that there wasn't possibly room to do the fifteen hundred. That gets back to what we're trying to pass, get some minimum square footage on the ground so that a minimum square footage can fit on, on, um...
Lot size, yeah.
Yeah, lot size. I think it, I think it goes hand in hand.
Okay. Other comments or questions? We have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. We'll now move on to item H, which is also a public hearing, which is consideration of an ordinance relative to the rezoning of tax, rezoning of tax map twenty-eight, parcel seventy-two point zero zero, from PCD to C two. It's requested by JLJ Strategic Realty. The property requested to be rezoned contains sixty-nine one-hundredths of an acre, is located at the corner of Isabella Lane and President's Place. Kevin?
Yeah, this is a rezoning request, uh, at the corner of Isabella Lane and President Place. That, the land use plan would designate this property as part of the Sammerly Corridor or Character Area, which would support a combination of retail uses and services, kind of, for both local and, and regional in scale. Uh, surrounding zoning is a mix of C two and PUD, which is Isabella Lane Self-Storage PUD, which is, uh, across the street there. Uh, existing approved PCD would allow a quick service or, and lube, lube business. Uh, zoning of this property prior to the rezoning to PCD was C two, so this would be a request to go back to the original zoning. Uh, the planning commission did review this, did recommend approval. Staff would also recommend approval.
We have had quite a bit of discussion about this parcel. Are there any questions or comments on it?
Yeah, obviously, you know, C twos are most, are least restrictive, but in this case, that's exactly what fits here. Um, so, uh, C twos all the way around it. So if there's a spot for C two, it's this one.
I know it's kind of, not the zoning, but I think there was some discussion about drives and conflicts of drives that probably planning commission can address.
Yeah, and we've got a site plan submitted, it'll be, for, it actually was submitted for January, and it was deferred or asked to be postponed until February, so it'll be on the agenda. We've been working with them on that very issue to kind of fix that issue.
Okay. Um, this is a public hearing, so I'll go to the public to see if there's anyone here to speak for or against this item. Seeing no one, we'll close public hearing, go to council for a motion.
No move. Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion pass, passes. Our last public hearing tonight is a consideration of an ordinance relative to the amendment of the existing PRD for tax map fifty-four, parcels forty-one point zero zero and forty-four point zero zero, requested by Blakeney General Partners. The property requested to be amended contains thirty-eight point eight-nine acres and is located at eighty-six thirteen and eighty-six seventy-five Rocky Fork and Louisville Road. Kevin?
Yes, Mayor and Council, this is a request to amend the existing PUD, or PRD, sorry, that was approved for this property. Land use plan will support, again, uh, as, with several of these, medium-density, single-family residential development. Surrounding zoning is a mix of, of PRD, which is the Blakeney and Courtyards of Stewart Creek PRDs in town, and RM in Rutherford County. Uh, the existing approved PRD is for eighty single-family lots and thirty-three townhomes, which is an overall density of two-point-nine-one homes per acre. Net density is three-point-five-seven. Uh, the requested amendment would allow fifty-nine single-family lots and thirty-two townhomes, which is an overall density of two-point-three-four houses per acre. And even though the, the, the number of homes is decreasing, the actual net density increased because there's quite a bit more opens, common open space, uh, the net density here, uh, is actually about four-point-eight-eight per acre, because they're actually only developing about eighteen-point-six acres of the, of the total. Um, so even though the growth density went down, then the net went up. Um, existing PRD does have a minimum house size of sixteen-hundred-and-fifty square feet. Uh, this amendment would be fifteen hundred square feet, but that would be living space. That does not include the garage, and that is specifically spelled out in, in this, the proposed amendment. All, uh, houses would, would, would have two-car garages, uh, would be finished with brick and concrete siding. Uh, proposed amenities include a playground and dog park. Um, access would be from a new road connection to Rocky Fork and Louisville Road, as well as connecting to, uh, a street named Kenwood Pass, which is a street stub into this property from the Blakeney development. Uh, the planning commission did review this, did recommend approval, uh, with a couple of conditions. One, to add additional brick or stone on all the housing options, especially important for homes with visibility from Rocky Fork and Louisville Road. And to show the proposed improvements, there's a couple of, of small common areas that are shown to be improved, uh, next to lot, the proposed lot thirty-seven, as well as along Kenwood Pass, uh, and we asked them to show what the improvements were going to be in, in those areas. And so with those conditions, uh, planning commission did recommend approval. Staff would also recommend approval.
Questions or comments to Kevin on this one? Okay, seeing none, we'll go to the public to see if there's anyone here to speak for or against this item. Hey, if you'll come forward and state your name, address, and if you're here representing someone.
Nathan Quinn, twenty-nine twenty-five Berry Hill Drive, uh, here with the developer. And just to let everybody know, I'm here to answer any questions that you might have, I'm here to answer any questions that you might have. But, you know, I mean, any issues with any of the conditions the planning director outlined? Thank you.
Anyone else to speak for or against this item? Seeing no one, we'll close, we'll close this public hearing and go to council for a motion.
Move to approve?
The motion to approve. Do we have a second?
Second.
In two seconds.
Do you want to choose? You good? You want to go with H C? For motion and a second, discussion.
Just not good enough.
Standard question, roadway improvements.
Yeah, I mean, this, we are, Mr. King is working on plans for kind of a phase one, which is, if I'm wrong, Charles, it's from basically the Derby Run area.
Is that by the town or the?
That's by the town.
It's about a mile of road, isn't it?
It's from Derby Run up to Morton Lane, Morton Lane.
Other comments or questions?
That's just, that's the first phase.
Kevin, is the Job Cemetery on the backside of this, or is that the adjacent property?
I believe that's the adjacent property.
Anything else? Okay, we have a motion and a second on the floor. All in favor say aye. Any opposed?
Aye.
Okay, we'll move on to new business. Planning Commission report. First item is consideration of an ordinance relative to the annexation, R three zoning of property on tax map fifty-four, part of parcel fourteen point oh three, requested by Robert Tresider, and, say it again?
Trezider.
Trezider, thank you, containing one point seven seven acres. The property is located at Green Gate Place.
Yes, this is an annexation request for about one point seven seven acres. It's a portion of an existing, a larger tract. And for some reason, my clicker's not working, so I apologize for that. It is a portion of a, of a larger tract. Mr. Trezider's home and all is on a larger tract. This is, there's a kind of a portion of his property, there we go. Kind of dog legs around to the west, around the, the Westover Development. And so he is requested for that portion of his property, which is about one point seven seven acres, to be annexed into the town and, and zoned R three. The land use plan would support medium density, single-family in this area. Surrounding zoning is R three and PRD, which is again, the Westover PRD in, in town, and RM in Rutherford County. This would be, all services would be provided here except for water. This does lie within CUD's service area. In the proposal, which is in your packet as well, Mr. Trezider is looking to, to, if, wants annexed to, to divide and create a couple of residential building lots off of the cul-de-sac. There's already water and sewer taps there. Everything is kind of in place for him to, to extend those there. The planning commission did review this request, did recommend approval. Staff would also recommend approval.
Questions on this, Steve or Mark, anything?
Only question, Kevin, and I don't remember, we might have discussed it, but will these be incorporated into the Westover Development Homeowners Association, or they still remain separate?
They would, I would assume they're going to remain separate.
Okay. For some reason, I thought we asked that. I thought we discussed it, but I don't remember what the response was.
I know we were, we were also, I was also asked about why wasn't a PRD considered?
Yeah, I remember that part, yeah.
Point of PRD, and it was because such a small development, two lots, to do a PRD didn't make a lot of sense.
The final plat, I mean, it shows the, the left lot ends up being almost an eighth of an acre, and the right, I mean, an eight, ten, yeah, eighth of an acre, I mean.
I think it's about eight tenths of an acre.
Yeah, eight tenths of an acre, right. And then the right one is almost exactly an acre. So, I mean, it creates two really pretty good-sized lots.
Other questions or comments?
How many units are going to be built on those, Kevin?
Just one, one home on each lot.
Okay.
Yeah. R three, I saw R three would allow.
Other questions or comments? Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion?
Did you say this, they would be on sewer, or?
Yes, yes, they will be on sewer, yeah. There's already sewer there from the Westover.
From the Westover, okay.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Item two is consideration of an ordinance amending the text of the Smyrna Municipal Zoning Ordinance, Article Two, Section two point zero two zero, definitions and two point zero three five point one one, special institutional care facilities, Article Four, Section four point zero one zero point two G, Article Five, Section five point zero five three point three I dash three, Heavy Industrial District, and Article Seven, Section seven point zero six one point one four, special conditions for special institutional care facilities. Could you have made that any longer?
I tried really hard. I tried to do what, you know, what Mike used to do with all the chemicals he would make you read. So I tried to, I tried to, you know, to do something like that. So I apologize for that. It, there's a lot of different sections of the ordinance that are, it's all concerning one particular issue. These, these basically all are dealing with a category of uses known as special institutional care facilities. This category of uses currently is not allowed in any zoning district. This is a kind of a hole in our ordinance that, quite frankly, has never come up before, but we had someone proposing, potentially locating one here, and so we realized we, we really needed to address this issue. So these are proposed amendments, would add a definition of a group shelter, would clean up wording regarding the use classification. That's in the section two point oh two oh and two point oh five three, two point oh three five point eleven. Create a parking requirement for the use, allow the uses as a special exception in the I three Heavy Industrial District, and to amend the special conditions which the category of uses would be required to meet. This, again, will correct an issue with the ordinance while limiting the potential locations this category of uses could utilize. The proposed amendments, they're, they're in your packet there. The new wording is highlighted in yellow. There are some areas that we're looking to remove things. That's, it's highlighted in red and, and, I'm sorry, in red ink and then struck through there. So again, we, we, we tried to, again, trying to address the issue but in as limited a manner as we could. And some of these would become a BZI review if, if someone had an I three piece of property and come to the Board of Zoning Appeals. The last section there are the conditions that the, that the, they would have to meet and that the board would have to review as part of their proposed location, so.
Questions for Kevin on?
The planning commission did recommend approval. I apologize.
Questions on special institutional care facilities? Okay, do I have a motion? Motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, discussion?
So you said this came up, the reason we're doing this is because it came up, the issue actually came up and you knew, you realized you needed to address it.
Yes.
I also asked during planning if this would allow the folks that had brought it up to move forward, and the answer was no.
Not at the location they were proposing.
Where they were choosing. Even though we made some adjustments, we didn't adjust it to meet their need. We adjusted the adjustments that needed to be made.
Kevin, it might have been in there when I was reading it. It talked about, it can't be, this is the one where it talked, that can't be so a distance between a church and all. Is that correct?
That's correct. A thousand feet from a church, a school, daycare center, nursery school, or public park, or another lawfully established facility.
What about subdivisions?
If you had, in theory, I guess you could. There were not, there was presidential, presidential use was not included in that. And we kind of, quite frankly, we copied a lot of this. I mean, we, we utilized, we didn't completely copy it. We, we utilized Murfreesboro's ordinance as part of their, some of their issues, and then use, and then also some of our own. Some communities, we did find, some communities actually allow this type of use in residential areas, certainly. We, we didn't want to do that.
Other questions? We have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. We'll move on to item three, which is consideration of an ordinance amending the text of the Smyrna Municipal Zoning Ordinance, Article Four, Section four point zero seven three, minimum lot area and frontage requirements within a. Kevin?
Yeah, this is a, the amendment that was discussed at the December council meeting and was requested of us to, to look at, and so we did put that together. This would amend Section four point oh seven three, which is a portion of the, the new changes we, we adopted in December for the PRD requirements. This would add a, a requirement of a twenty-foot landscape buffer within any PRD when that PRD abuts properties owned either R one in town or RM in Rutherford County. No other aspects of the approval of, of the new requirements would change. This, everything would remain in place. It would just add this additional requirement. Again, the, the new language is there, highlighted in yellow, that just, does spell all that out. And of course, we had quite a bit of discussion about this already tonight. I do think this is a good change because this puts it in, it codifies it for everyone, for, for the developers, as well as any adjoining property owners. It's, it's clear that this requirement would be, would be put in place. So the planning commission did review this, did recommend approval.
Yeah, I, I agree, Kevin. I think this is a good change. I mean, we obviously heard from several folks talking about buffers tonight, so that's kind of what's driving some of this. And codifying it and making it kind of clear from the beginning is, is the best way to handle it. So for what it's worth, Miss Reason over, and even Patrick and the homeowners there on Lee, you know, this is a direct result of your guys' work. So I appreciate you bringing it to our attention and making it an issue. So we're trying our best to fix it.
So my question has to do with, this is only going to affect R one, not if it's abutting R three? And why, why do we choose just R one? Is that because that's all we talked about, or?
That's what was requested at the council meeting. Yeah, we talked about it. Most of the time, if it's R three, it's probably developed. It's not the large tracts like we were talking about with the Buchenes and all their neighbors and Miss Reason over and the other things. The R one, most of the R one that we have, there is some R one that is developed. But most of the time, if it's zoned R three, it's, it got zoned R three because someone was developing it. So it's, it's already developed and single. So we have some other issues for other, not issues, but other requirements within the, the PRD that, as far as lot size and those kind of things, it would be required, they would be required to meet. So the seventy-five percent rule and all that.
Okay.
Kevin, I've got a question. Is, is this the, are we going to include RM for the county?
Yes, yes, that does. That is included. Yes, sir.
Yeah, I was probably zoning out when you said that.
The Belmont discussion that we had earlier tonight, we're talking about, there'll most likely be a buffer when they come in. I was kind of thinking about that one as an example. On the left side of that property, it kind of, it adjoins the Belmont, and it's in county on, which is probably, it's not RM, I don't know what that county.
I think it is RM, actually.
That development on the left. So they're developed homes, but it's still RM. So I think this covers ninety percent of what we see. We still have the option of requiring or adding a buffer if it's not a PRD, and they come in and try to do this, right? So we still have that option.
Other comments or questions? Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Show a second, any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Now move on to item B under new business, which is consideration of an ordinance amending the Town of Smyrna sign ordinance, Chapter Six, permitted signs in non-residential districts, Section A, signs other than billboards and interstate signs. Jeff?
This is something that Ben and Christie had worked on. This is an amendment to the sign ordinance. Really is just clarifying which is the, on five B, that irrespective of the presence or absence of a sign, that no bands of neon or fluorescent light shall be placed in, in windows. You'll also see there before you're on your desk, we also clarified on five A, as Mr. Santucci had noticed, the way it had been set up, it looked like everything under A was, is applicable. And so instead of reorganizing everything, all we needed to do was remove the language, meeting the following illumination requirements, so that A stands on its own as well now.
And that's at your desk? Is it not right there under your paper, under your agenda?
No, that's.
Okay. He didn't have it. He lost it.
Well, that's a discussion.
We've got a tight budget.
If they want to do it before the.
Print six, print seven.
But.
Other questions on this?
So now that we have this, it's not retroactive, or how does it affect what's going on presently?
So once this is passed, then it would be enforceable, because there's no vesting for this type of activity. So we couldn't write a ticket for something that had last month, but we could going forward.
But I think your question, this doesn't grandfather the current people?
No, right, no.
So Harry's going to address what's going on right now. Like, is codes going to write a ticket now, if they see it?
Codes would follow their normal procedures for any violations. And then if they need help from our office on prosecuting those in the municipal court, then obviously we would. But, but yeah, Chris can talk to that of how she's going to do it, but.
The question is, like, do they get a period to correct the issue?
Yeah, I say we, we look for compliance before enforcement, so.
So as to ticketing, we generally would send a notice to the owner or the leasing tenant or whatever, and give them a period of time. Usually it's ten to thirty days to remove the violation. And then an opportunity, the gentleman, our property standards guys, would talk to them and give them an opportunity to fix it. We're not going to just take them to court. And then if nothing happens, then of course we'll ticket them.
I just wanted that explained, so that people know that they still have an opportunity to comply.
They will definitely be notified, usually in person and also via email. So.
Agreed. Okay.
Does it include LED also? Didn't obtain a question.
No, it does not necessarily include LED or exclude LED, mainly because LED lights usually refer to Christmas lights, and so we want to kind of avoid that maybe issue at this point.
Okay.
I know what he's thinking.
I'm just thinking LED lights are becoming more and more.
I mean. We can kind of look to see if there's any other way that we can do that by, by, without ruining Christmas.
Well, with the exception of holiday lighting.
You make sure everybody knows that she is the one who ruined Christmas.
With the exception of holiday lighting, I'm not an attorney, but yeah, that in, you know.
So if I, if I can, Council, Council member Cole did address this with me, and, and I, I understand completely where you're coming from. I think if we can figure out something between first and second reading, if, if the council would like us to look at that, because I think the issue really is the difference between the permanency of LED lighting that may be around a window dressing as opposed to Christmas lights. I just want to make sure I understand what we discussed.
Look in the businesses that have lights in the, in the perimeter of the, of the windows. You're going to find that most of them are LED these days.
It's Christmas all year long over there. It's Christmas all year long in those businesses.
Absolutely, absolutely.
So, so I just wanted to, I thank you for that, for bringing, bringing that up and then clarifying what we're talking about. And if there's a way, we'll, we'll, I'm sure, I'm sure Jeff can work some magic.
We'll look and see if there's a commercial purpose that we can carve out.
Handle it, handle it.
Okay. Okay, do we have a motion?
Uh, some move.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Amber, Dave, anything under other tonight? I didn't see anything on our desk. Okay. Status reports. Rex?
Mayor and Council. December state share tax, we received seven hundred and fifty-nine thousand, seven hundred and forty dollars. And if you look in the cumulative change column, that, that percentage is trending upward, and that's good. December local sales tax, we received one million, seven hundred and seventy-five thousand and fifty-nine dollars. And if you'll look again at the cumulative change column on there, the percentage is trending up, and we're really happy about that.
Questions for Rex on either of these two? Thanks, Rex. Okay, um. Staff, any announcements that need to be made tonight? Amber?
Yes, ma'am. I believe I have the census slide tonight. And I will not go into my full spiel because I know we're getting kind of late into the night, but I did want to let everybody know that at this point, we have deployed the fire department for door-to-door visits to those that we have not received a response from. And it looks like they're getting a little traction. From yesterday to today, it looks like we've gotten about five hundred additional residents that have been counted. So you can also call in on the telephone. I know the fire department has some of their personnel on the phones as well as going door-to-door, and they're making calls to households that they have not received a response from. We're, we're not going to be doing another mailer at this point. We are going to get creative with other ways. You may see some text messaging coming out in the near future with a link to get on and reply to that. You can also call into town hall, complete it over the phone. hope it's not. But if they show up and you don't know whether your house is on fire or not, it could be that you need to respond to your census. So, if that's the case, please do that as well.
Are the police helping as well?
No, the police are not.
They wouldn't answer the door for you, chief.
Correct. So, that is why, you know, we may at some point get other personnel on the phone as well and kind of try to do that. I'm working with the apartment complexes, and I've gotten lists of the property managers with each apartment complexes here in town. So, we're in communication with them and seeing how we can partner with them as well to try to generate some additional response. So, we're getting creative. We're still out there hitting it as hard as we can. We just ask for everybody's patience. Please be nice and get those responses in.
What are our numbers looking like?
We are just like a little over 31,000 verified residents. And I did speak with Mitch and Kevin in our planning department, and that is a clean number at this time. Obviously, there was some fluctuation, because they were in the back end kind of deleting duplicates as, but I have confirmed that this is a good, clean number. So, that's where we're at at this point. Still got work to do.
We need people to respond desperately.
We're only halfway there.
Yeah. Okay. Dave?
Just one. I want to thank, is not the word. I want to really give a shout out to our crews who worked on Friday and Saturday to keep our roads safe. These gentlemen that are, that are here, they were ready to go, preparing on Thursday, getting all the equipment ready. Early, early Friday morning, they were out there salting the roads. And so, from the top, you've got Kobe Hummel, Danny Hatcher up there closer to the truck there, Ethan Springer, Keith Smith, Blake Pope, some guy, Tom Rose, Chaz Dearman, Earl Seal, Patrick Mashburn, Scott Wright, Brandon McCoy, and Ben LaFever. And no, seriously though, with Tom, Tom was interviewed on Thursday, did a great job in that interview explaining to the public what we do. Not to take anything away from these guys and the hard work that they, that they did, but we also had the weather in our favor for this one. We're going to have events where, you know, the weather's not in our favor, and it could definitely last a little bit longer out there. But, just tremendous, you know, passion for service from these guys reflected over the weekend. And I want to thank Tom and his crew for doing that. Great job, guys.
Anything else?
That is it.
Jeff?
Nothing for me.
Cheryl?
I think I have my first public announcement or slide tonight, so critique me.
Did you practice? Did you practice?
Yes. Join Friends of Smyrna Library on Saturday, January 25th, from 11:00 to 1:00 for their annual Super Friends Saturday Membership Drive. Come on out for a free cup of soup and learn more about how you can support the Friends of Smyrna Library. Again, January 25th, 11:00 to 1:00 at Smyrna Public Library. Also like to thank every, all the citizens that's reached out to me on various issues, roadways, and I know Dave and Tom and Charles been a big help with trying to get those issues resolved, how's that bring them in?
Anything else?
Nope, thank you.
Uh huh. Raquel?
All right, I also have a slide. All right, the Christmas tree drop-off is open still. Please drop your live trees at the Lee Victory Recreation Park. From now until January the 19th, the drop-off will be near the football field parking lot. Remember to remove all decorations and tinsel before you drop them off. All right. And I'd like to say thank you to all of the town staff and employees who had to work during the quote-unquote snowmageddon. Thank you for all that you all did. And I actually was out on Saturday morning, and the roads were in really, really good shape. And I texted Dave, because I was actually driving through some of the neighborhoods, just to see how things had started to clear up. And they were all pretty clear. And I was so excited that we had done such a fabulous job of taking care of the streets for the citizens. So, thank you, Dave, and to all of the staff for all that you did during, during this weather episode. And then I have one other announcement. I'd like to say happy birthday to my son Gabriel, who will be turning 17 on the 17th. And that's all I have, mayor.
Great. HG?
Rex, I guess we're doing okay, but never enough, correct?
Never.
Never enough. Next month's numbers will reflect how we did at Christmas, correct?
No, is it next month?
Okay, okay. Right, December's numbers come in then. Right, very good. I have a slide. Love where you live. So, help keep Smyrna litter-free, put your trash in the proper receptacles. And also, be kind.
Okay. Karen?
Yeah, I want to also just to say thank you to the street department. Those roads were really nice, and really, you guys did a great job. And I want to say thank you. I live on a state road, and it's pretty, it's pretty busy. And it was clear, all the way to 8:40. So, so thank you. And we really do appreciate all you guys did. Got a birthday also. My son Tyler has his birthday tomorrow, so happy birthday to Tyler. And then I've got a slide. The town hall is going to be closed in observance of Martin Luther King Day on Monday, January 20th. And, you know, I got to thank him. And I think I'm right. I think this is the only holiday of the year that has been put in and observed by a person that was in at least my lifetime. I think most of the other holidays that we celebrate, I was trying to think of some, but I can't think of any others that has come along that was after somebody that, that lived in our lifetime or my lifetime. We've got a plaque on the wall at the house. It's by, it says Martin Luther King. It's a saying that he said, and it said, "Faith is going up a stairs and not knowing what's at the top." This is something that's always kind of stuck with me. So, enjoy your holiday and remember what it's about. Thank you.
In case you missed it, Mr. King's niece, Alita, was at World Outreach Church this week. It was very entertaining. She's, she's a very good speaker. I very enjoyed. But she was there this past weekend. I've also got a slide. Also, on the 20th is the inauguration of our next president and old president. Stewart's Creek Band has been invited to perform in the presidential inauguration. So, congratulations to Stewart's Creek. They selected to perform at the 60th inauguration in the parade that we represent in the Town of Smyrna, Rutherford County Schools, and the state of Tennessee. They are also still raising money for this journey. I think the last I heard it was around $20,000 they had to raise.
A hundred and twenty.
A hundred and twenty. A hundred and twenty, okay. I just didn't listen properly.
They're right around nine.
Yeah. So, so they're getting close. So, if you are interested, individuals or businesses, in helping to support them with their journey to the Capitol, you can visit supportschband.com and make your contribution from there. You can also contact stewartscreekband@gmail.com if you want more information. But, I'll say that again, I don't think it's on the website, I mean, on the screen. So, supportschband.com. Also, Tom, thank you very much. The snow came on Friday. We got to stay in and kind of enjoy the weather Saturday. And by Sunday, we were tired of being stuck at home, and we were able to go anywhere we wanted. So, perfect, perfect scenario for us. It worked out well. You guys did an amazing job. And then, lastly, on Saturday, my daughter and my son-in-law came over to visit, and they told us that they are expecting. So, we're expecting a grandbaby in August. So, pretty excited about that. She's somehow kept it from us. She's almost 10 weeks, so she's been pregnant since the first of, or near Thanksgiving, and somehow didn't tell us all the way through Christmas. So, if you don't think she can keep her mouth shut, she definitely can. But congratulations to Caleb and Stephanie. Caleb is Mark Gagne, the principal of the Durham Francis. It's his son. So, I had dinner with Mark this past week, and we kind of fist bumped that we are now going to be DNA-related. So, this is good.
Well, expecting means it's a grandchild, so expect to open that pocketbook up, too, you know, this is going to come.
She is going to find out, boy or girl, and we'll find that out next week. So, pretty exciting.
My appreciation to all the road team, Dave, that you mentioned. I'm glad you mentioned each one of their names. A little recognition never hurt anybody. Encouragement goes a long, long way. So, thank you for those guys for going out and making our roads safe. To our police and fire departments, too. We, we did have accidents. We did have some things take place during the snow. And so, those guys were out there doing their jobs as well. So, thank you to all of them. Mentioned encouragement. And, you know, we had, tonight, we had a lot of people do public speaking here, and they came with either their concerns or whatever it is. And so, I always like to stop and think a little bit about, what are we grateful for? You know, it's always good to put ourselves in a position of, what's our gratitude? What are we grateful for? The thing I liked about tonight is everybody that spoke had that sense of spirit, I thought. And so, I just, it's always something I think we need to remind ourselves of. It's not the things we don't have, but it's the things that we do that we're blessed with. And so, gratitude is a big thing for me. And so, thank you all for the spirit in which you presented it tonight. And hopefully, things can move forward and get resolved for everybody that had a concern. My wife and I were coming home from somewhere the other day, I think church or somewhere. And on Florence Road, there was a big old sack of trash thrown over on the side of the road. I'm guilty. I drove right by it. But, we went out again, and, you know, I told her, I said, "I'm going to stop." She said, "You're going to get run over." There, not a car showed up, but I picked up this big old honking bag of trash. And there was other trash scattered down Florence Road. Well, the next day, as luck would have it, because I was going to go back, I felt like, "It's nasty," you know? And the next day, the Rutherford County Work House was working Florence Road hard. And so, it's cleaned up a little bit now. But I appreciate those guys for getting out in the cold weather and helping clean up our town a little bit. You know, they've had sort of a, they're probably in there for a reason, have a rough go. But, you know, thank you for being willing to get out and bend over and pick up trash that other people have so blatantly either thrown out the window or lost out of their trucks or whatever. So, to what she says, be kind, be grateful, and shop local.
I have a couple of items.
Did I get my slide? Are you jumping in front of my slide?
Yes.
You're jumping in front of my slide, yeah. This is a simple one. I'm not going to read it all, because it's a long one. But sometime back in the 1990s, I'm not going to go into dissertation, but in the 1990s, I became a member of the Board of Zoning Appeals here at the Town of Smyrna. I was asked to do that by somebody I worked with. Since that time, I've served on a lot of boards and committees, which eventually involved doing the things I do today. What I like to say is, we have a lot of people in town that often ask me what they can do to be a servant to their town, or how they can pitch in and help out. And this is a way to do it right here by applying for a board and a committee. You never know where it's going to lead, I promise you. I didn't know that either. But, we have a lot of boards and committee applications that are open, many seats available. If you live in the Town of Smyrna, go onto townofsmyrna.org, fill out an application, and find your way to serve our town in some way. You'll be glad that you did. That's all I've got.
Thanks. Council members, if you'll go on and share that from our social media page, if you've not already done so, to help get the word out, we would appreciate that. I have two slides tonight, or one slide tonight. It is about our Captain Jeff Coos Memorial Scholarship. And the Coos Scholarship Program offers educational opportunities to deserving high school seniors who exhibit exceptional academic abilities, leadership qualities, citizenship and character, including participation in school and community activities. To be eligible to apply for a scholarship, the applicant must be a current high school senior who intends to enroll in a program of post-secondary education within one year of high school graduation, and either a current resident of Smyrna or currently enrolled in a high school that is physically located in the Town of Smyrna. For more information, you can visit our website at townofsmyrna.org. The application deadline is Friday, March the 14th. So, we encourage you, and we will be giving three $2,000 scholarships. Yeah. Okay. We don't have a slide for this, but we want to make sure that we get the word out, because the next time we meet, it'll be the day before. We hope that you'll join us for Chief Coberson's retirement celebration, our fire chief, on Friday, January 31st, from 2:00 to 4:00 at the Smyrna Event Center. We'll begin the program at 3:15. And we encourage you to come out and join us as we celebrate chief's 35-year legacy as Smyrna's first fire chief. So, if you will come out and join us, no, as Smyrna's first full-time fire employee, not the first fire chief.
His grandfather was the first chief.
Oh, really?
Mm-hmm.
Huh. Of the volunteers. Yeah. You got the date. January 31st, 2:00 to 4:00, Smyrna Event Center, 3:15 is the program. Okay. Anything else to come before us tonight? What? Oh, yeah. We appreciate Mayor Carr coming out tonight to talk to us a little bit about the forensic center. I think that's something that's going to be great for our community. And are you from Leadership Rutherford? We appreciate you sitting through almost a three-hour meeting to get your credit for Leadership Rutherford. And you stayed the whole time. You did good.
Can we get extra credit?
Extra credit. We'll talk to Stephanie about extra credit for that. So, we appreciate you coming out tonight. So, okay, if there's nothing else, then we are adjourned.